Thanks. All right, welcome, everyone. This is Kristin Vincent, Chair of the Westboro School Committee. Today is Wednesday, December 1st, 2021. This meeting of the school committee is called to order. Please stand if you are able for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands in the US with liberty and justice.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Anyone attending the school committee meeting tonight is required to wear a mask. The town of Westboro has mandated face covering starting today, December 1st, for anyone over the age of two entering a municipal building regardless of vaccination status. I'd like to notify everyone in the room with us tonight that this meeting is being recorded by Westboro TV. School committee meetings are available for remote viewing or listening on Westboro TV's government channels, Verizon 28 and Charter 192, and online on the Westboro TV YouTube channel. A recording of this meeting will be posted on the Westboro YouTube channel in the next day or so. And thank you to Westboro TV for covering the broadcast tonight. We have with us at this meeting Superintendent Amber Bach, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Daniel Mayer, Director of Finance and Administration, David Gordon, Vice Chair of the Westboro School Committee, Steve Giratt, School Committee members Sarah Dulay, Lisa Edinburgh, and Raghu Nandan, our student representative Andrew Chen, and our recording secretary Jen Benton is watching from home. We have staff from Westboro TV handling the broadcast and the recording of this meeting. And I will quickly review our agenda. We will have an approval of minutes from November 17th, regular session. We will have the superintendent's report, the assistant superintendent's report, and a report from the Director of Finance and Administration. At 6:15, we will be holding a public hearing on the proposed budget for FY23. Then after we exit the public hearing, we will continue with school committee member reports, building project updates, citizens' requests, Asbury Valley Collaborative's first quarterly update, a COVID update and vote on a timeline for implementation of flexible masking, and then we will adjourn. We do not have a need for an executive session tonight. So we will begin with an approval of minutes from November 17th, regular session.
Go move.
Thank you, Steve.
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. Is there any discussion of the minutes? All right, all in favor?
Bye.
All right, that's 5-0. Those minutes are approved. I'm going to turn it now to our superintendent. Welcome.
Thank you. All right. Obviously, we have a couple of big agenda items tonight where we need good blocks of time to talk, so we'll keep our updates short. I hope everyone was able to have a good Thanksgiving weekend. We were able to reopen schools smoothly, bringing fails forward to their week and a half, now heading into their third week of building occupancy this week. They are currently undergoing some COVID case outbreaks that have escalated at that building, so they're taking some measures similarly to when, I think several weeks ago Armstrong had a small spike in numbers to just kind of implement test and stay. I think we have four classrooms doing test and stay at fails right now. Similarly, we had had, I think, three or four at Armstrong at one point. They kind of cycled through that and then settled down. They have currently none. So we're hopeful, too, to see the same trajectory with fails or with the test and stay and the good protocols and spacing at SNAK and the things that they know to do that we then bring it back in alignment, similarly as we did when we had the case that got bigger at Mill Pond. So other than that, you know, being a piece of return, I think the return has been really smooth. I want to give a commendation to the school nurses and to the classroom teachers and to the admin at those buildings because the implementation of managing that is hopefully, you know, feeling as seamless as possible to families. But, you know, obviously, you have a whole admin team that spent Thanksgiving making calls to multiple families through the whole weekend and implementing the follow-up necessary to make sure that we could return on Monday. And, you know, that work is kind of seamlessly experienced, but I just want to be clear that it has its impact on the time and energy of the team working at the building level. So I think, you know, at this point, I continue to feel that our implementation measures are very solid, and I'm hoping that fails will kind of swing back under that control number soon. We are coming into concert season, so it's busy. I think there are two this week, and they start to do a trajectory across all of the schools, which is just a wonderful part of our sense of a more normal year. I'm sure that Andrew will have more specific updates. So that will be my update for tonight. It was a quiet week, of course, as we had a short week, so that's it for me tonight.
Thank you. Dr. Mayer, do you have anything?
Yeah, I have one update having to do with the issue at the high school in terms of thinking ahead to our exam period this year and midterm exams. There's been much discussion among high school leadership across the state about coming back from having a year of the year that we had like last year and kids being ready for taking high stakes tests in the middle of the year. A lot of back and forth about, you know, the mid-year test exam usually is 10% of the grades spread across the whole year, so it is a high stakes kind of exam. And at this point, the high school, in the meeting that they had with 26 other high schools, you know, the sort of the community of high school leadership was split about the best way to approach this, but more and more, the consensus has become altering that high stakes period this year, both from what we're hearing from other high school leadership and also from what we're hearing from our own faculty and students at the school, that there's just, it would be in the best interest of our kids to not have the exam period look the way that it usually looks. In terms of the, basically, there would still be an exam period. There would be tests that would count towards the students' grades, but they wouldn't count towards second semester, not the whole year, and they would not be 10% of the weighted as heavily. So the exams also might look somewhat different, and they may be projects or, you know, labs or something like that sort. But that's the current consensus among the department heads and the leadership at the high school. And a communication about that would be coming out in the coming weeks, like before, you know, probably within one to two weeks, both to the students and to the parents, just being more explicit about what the expectations are and the way that two-week exam period at the end of January would look.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions about that? Andrew has questions.
Are you disappointed, Andrew? You want a high-stakes test?
Yeah, so like last year, when we didn't have midterms, I think substituting it with like a lab or a product is equally as productive and educational as a midterm exam with much less stress, much better for students' mental health. So, yeah. I mean, either way, I think it'd be a good decision.
Okay, thank you.
I think just knowing that it doesn't carry that weight with it, that it's an exam. Kids need to have evaluations and exams, but it doesn't carry that weight, I think, is an appropriate step this year.
And we're still in a recovery period, I think, mental health-wise. I mean, from what we've discussed here in the school committee, it feels like we're at crisis level, and to reduce that seems very rational. So I'm glad to hear that 26 high schools were sort of in the mix to discuss it. It's interesting that it was split for a while, but I'm glad to hear that what the outcome was. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome. That's it.
Okay, thanks. Dave, do you have anything to share now? I know you'll have more to share later.
Sorry, excuse me. Thank you. Just a very brief update. Speaking with NRT this week, we did discover that NRT is facing some hardships related to the pandemic and COVID. We are, NRT is working hard to ensure that most of our routes aren't impacted. They maybe have to do some doubling of routes, which will delay or cause some delays for the PM service. But again, we are strategizing with them to, you know, put their best foot forward. It's an unfortunate situation, but as the year is dictated, it's a kind of a human capital thing, and COVID hasn't, the effects of COVID hasn't helped at all in the last couple of weeks. Additionally, we do have one driver that's working through the process, not ready yet, but sooner than later, that one driver will be available for us. So hopefully, we can access them and offset some of the issues that they're having. But, and we continue our efforts to try to recruit throughout the district, but we'll keep that going forth. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Thanks. And we are a few minutes ahead for our public hearing on the budget, so I'm going to have Andrew. You can go ahead and do your report for us.
Okay, so I have a few reports today. Gibbons students collected over around $1,500 from their trick-or-treat for UNICEF program, which is amazing.
That's awesome.
And it'll go a long way towards helping children in need. Hastings students have been learning about responsibility and traditions for the upcoming holiday season and for the Hastings Has Heart program. The fail students, for their book of the month, is Change Sings, a children's anthem written by Amanda Gorman. Also, at 7 o'clock tonight, the winter concert series begins, and there will be the acapella groups performing live on Westboro TV's YouTube channel. So I'm not saying, if you're watching this, to stop watching, but there are incredibly talented students performing. And yeah, I highly recommend go check that out. And also, the class 2022, the seniors hip and tish show will be held on December 10th at 6:00 PM, and tickets will be sold starting next week. And yep, that's all I have to report.
Show them your sweatshirt.
Okay, great.
Oh, sweatshirt, yeah. They're the senior sweatshirts.
Very good. That's awesome.
And they're on the back.
That's so great. It's all their names in the 22, so that's awesome.
It's exciting.
Really cool.
Caps and gowns are going out, too.
Yeah. Sarah, do you have anything tonight?
I have a quick. Just have an update on my Safe Routes to School grant. It has finally been submitted, so I won't talk about it for a few weeks at least. Chris Payant, the Director of the DPW, has a very collaborative, submitted it yesterday. It was a very collaborative effort by Julie Squires, Nancy Siegel from the Active Transportation Safety Committee, Kelly Giacapalo, Bob Ferguson from the School Buildings and Grounds Department, Joe Bacodaro, and Chris Payant from the DPW, with input on our student data from Jack Foley and John Mendes, and Westboro Police. They even put in some information on traffic and speeding, support from the Board of Selectmen, and Town Manager Chrissy Williams. So we, Chris submitted a $1.2 million grant for improvements to Fisher Street, from Otis Street to Church Street, including sidewalks, curbing, crosswalks, and signage. And just in general, we're in a better position at this point to complete these type of grants and potentially actually receive the funding. I credit that to the townwide efforts by the several boards and committees that worked on Complete Street, Safe Routes to School, the Master Plan, and the Climate Action Plan. So it was really nice to have that collaborative effort and actually get it in. So thank you to everyone involved in that. And I just saw this afternoon that our athletic director, Johanna DeCarlo, was recognized with the National Interscholastic Athletic Administrators Association State Award of Merit. I think I got that right. It's nice for her to get that recognition from her fellow athletic directors. She's extremely professional, dedicated to all the students and the Westboro schools, and represents Westboro well in the community and at the state level. So congratulations to her on a well-deserved honor.
Yeah, and thank you for all your work on the Safe Routes to School grant. I know it was a tight deadline, and so congratulations for getting that off. And I think we'll learn a lot from submitting the grant, whether we get something or not. We'll learn a lot from that. So, thank you. Thanks, and congrats to Johanna. So we are approaching 6:15, so I think we'll take a break from our school committee reports and move into our public hearing on the budget. So I need a motion to enter the public hearing on the proposed FY22 budget.
Go move.
Thank you, Steve. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Sarah. And we need to do a roll call vote to enter the public hearing.
Dulay, yes.
Nandan, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Giratt, yes.
And Vincent, yes. So we are now in a public hearing. So we will begin with a budget overview by our superintendent and our Director of Finance and Administration. And then we can call on members of the public who are present that wish to speak about our proposed budget and take any comments from committee members. So we'll begin with a budget overview.
All right. Thank you very much. Dave and I have been over here kibitzing while you were talking. I apologize. We came right from one meeting, right into this one. So we had planned on having a little bit of a time to discuss together our presentation. So we'll be jumping in back and forth a little bit together. This is the fourth organized presentation that we've brought to you, and we've always mentioned that the school budgeting is a complex process, and so it works best to break it down into pieces for people to see it in the stages. I think it gives us one of our most, one of the most transparent budget processes of a municipal budget, to be able to kind of see it as it develops and hear the rationale for how the numbers come to final recommendation. I'll make a final recommendation tonight in terms of the person who's stewarding this budget forward to you, and then over the next two weeks, you have more time to review it, and we will return for an opportunity to vote that budget, in which time it becomes school committee's budget in full, as well as mine and all of ours, to move forward towards town meeting. So the goal of tonight, as always, to provide some tight summary of the pieces for people that might tune in, example, for the first time tonight during the public hearing. And so we tried to make sure that we capture a tight replay and to set the context for people so that they can follow along on the presentation. For those of you, of course, on school committee, it means you might hear pieces again, and I think you understand the rationale for that, but I just want to make sure it also helps us frame the conversation for other people. So we'll take a quick look at the timeline and goals so people can see the work we've done. We'll summarize the big highlights of '21 and '22, which have substantive impact on '23. And so over the last two years of kind of what we've faced in budgeting and implementation. We'll then review the major cost centers of '23 building budgets specifically, and big departments, and then we'll look specifically at the '23 budget, the core impact areas that lead to the final recommendation. So you can see in the trajectory, we really start from September 8th, right when school opens, to kind of frame the beginning of plans for budgeting. It's also been clear that David and I are a new team this year, and we've needed time to be able to look at all of the pieces of the budget and to go back through past work. And I think we've, you know, found our way forward very successfully this year, and pieces of how we've presented this budget look different because it's a new team. And I think we feel good about the pieces that we'll see tonight in terms of how we're presenting the information. As of now, December 1st, which is the final recommendation, and for people watching, you can see the trajectory of past meetings. I do want to call out that one of the things we haven't been able to do is anchor a meeting yet with our finance committee liaison team. We know that they're vigilant, though, and well-trained, and they pay attention. You know, obviously, the chair is here tonight and very, very much kind of listening, but also, I know that our liaisons listen from home. But we typically do meet with them and have an opportunity to kind of answer questions early for them. So between now and December 15th, I'm going to want to anchor an opportunity to make sure that we're surfacing their questions. I think it remains very important that their voice is, you know, in my comments to you as we move towards final approval of the budget. And so we'll complete that piece and make sure that before the 15th, we've had a chance to speak with them and hear their questions. Certainly, you know that it's the beginning of discussion, and we see many more opportunities to talk with FinCom and Selectmen and other people between now and March town meeting. But it's different to meet with a committee before you're voting a final number to hear questions as opposed to defending a number. Those are very different approaches. And so I'll be working with David and I to sit down with them soon. We keep all of our budgeting goals annually around anchor areas that help us to focus the use of our funding and the use of our resources. Excellence to the work that we do in maintaining that program base, respect for the relationships we share across other municipal groups and the community at large, managing costs and impact, trying to be really strategic for when funding options come forward, and come up with creative solutions when we can, and continue to look at the components of recovery as they relate to managing the fiscal issues over the last three years, given the variability of the budgeting that we've faced. So in just a moment, what we'll focus on is a recap of '21 and '22 for you and the salient points that we want to bring out. I like this picture. This is the most recent one that I got. This is the cafe, the pizza cafe at the preschool, and Daniel's ordering.
I'm very carefully reading the menu there.
You were definitely giving them a dedicated look. So that's our preschool, having a very active day. So in the fiscal '21-'22, we've really talked about these impacts, and I wanted to follow up on a couple of questions that were asked before around which ones, you know, continue to be unfunded. And I just want to highlight some areas where we have targeted return over last year and this year, either in '22 or '23's requests. So you see in custodians, for example, of that original $700,000 that was cut from '21, that was a delay of a hire, and we didn't make that hire. We are still currently carrying an underfunded area in custodians because we have an opening, we haven't been able to fill for an electrician, so we're still, we're still under in that area, but we did hire that custodian, which was a deferred hiring in order to take that savings, and we didn't post that position in FY21 till like mid-year. And that's how we kept that savings. So that has been recovered. The paraeducators, you know, I want to represent that we've been able to do some additional coverages through the grant funding and that the paraeducator volume, you know, moves with move-ins and complexities of cases. So, you know, that, that trajectory is certainly, I feel like we're not down that pair anymore, although the majority of that is probably carried on grants. Travel. So we did fold in some travel slash training. I don't really travel, but we had cut the superintendent's travel and the finance directors. You remember, we cut both of ours, and we took zeros on that and didn't attend those pieces that we usually go to, which is the summer training that we go to for superintendents. It's back in as of FY22, and I anticipate that I will go to that. Doesn't usually use all of that, but that was returned at least partially. It's carried forward in '23, so you'll see it in there when we do the larger budget book. Technology, you know, of the $150,000 cuts, we returned 50 last year, and there's 50 requests in this particular budget year. So those are areas where we've seen some partial return. The custodian, the one isn't really a return, but just, I want to acknowledge that it isn't a cost hanging out there still. a cost hanging out there still. The others, if you go to the cuts that we did in FY '22, to move from what was a 5.6% to come down to the, to the 4.94, that was the $400,000. That was really a straight surgical cut where we just basically line item eliminated funding and tried to tighten down the way we were working on those things, or we didn't order furniture. So those are, those are cuts that are still outside of the account. And, you know, there was also that revolving account, which was closed out. But again, that's just like a free cash lowering of, if you want to think about it that way, of the, that 150 from last year basically just pulled the number down in the base that we asked for. So it does impact how much higher the percentage looks when you see it as we move forward into FY '23.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Or do you want us to ask at the end?
Um, you can ask now.
Okay. So I'm wondering if the paraeducator salaries that you brought back in, is it that total you brought it back in, or is it a partial?
No, it's a partial.
And does it show up later in the chart?
It doesn't. It doesn't. I just, I think it's important to note that at the time, those were eliminations we made of para salaries where we cut several positions. We did a big reorg that year, and we moved across buildings. And Sherry did a reallocation of the use of resources, and really, we eliminated several positions. And we haven't brought those back. We did have, for example, though, two move-ins where we required para support, so we put those onto a grant. So you're not going to see it in salaries, but I just want to at least acknowledge, although it's a very complex kind of matrix to follow, that, that, you know, when we have needed para support, we've found a way to provide that support kind of last year and currently in FY '22. But those aren't, that dollar amount isn't permanently returned to the base, no.
And is there a way that we cut? I'm curious about cutting custodians, considering that I have this perception that we had them working overtime last year, just because of the type of protocols that were in place.
Yeah. Yep. Sorry, go ahead.
No, I'm just curious, did we cut a person? Did we?
We had a position that was open, and so we were looking to hire it. So it was an open position where someone had left. And in order to save funds, we deferred hiring the position and posting it till January. So we basically saved a proportional part of the total annual salary by waiting. And so that was kind of a direct savings, but it hasn't, we now, we did post that position and have hired it. Does that make sense?
You jogged a memory for me. I remember that happening. Delayed.
It's hard. We've moved a lot. A lot of those were, again, amendments we made, you know, multiple times as we were working with the town around the issues of COVID concerns. All right. The others on the right, that we did kind of that surgical cut at '22, I think it's an important note because if you look at those numbers versus where we are as we move forward towards the final recommendation this year, you can see that last year, we would have had a 5.6% budget increase, and we basically took those cuts and we used that revolving account to basically bring that number down. So as you look at the departmental and the school-based budgets, you know, over these last three years of cycle, both department and school-based budgets have been minimally increased, received zero or decreased. So you've seen some very minimal increases to a couple of the departmental budgets. Like, you're going to see that for the athletics, which was, again, is a minimal increase for athletic costs. You see some targeted departmental needs, but basically, we've either cut their budgets, reduced them, or zeroed them for the last three years, inclusive of this year. And you saw that in the last presentation when we went through, that all of the school-based budgets are basically level funded this year, in most of the departments, although you do see in a couple areas some strategic increases. If you look at that, again, that's true for FY '23 budgets, which is, I say, for the last three budgets, so '21, '22, and into '23. That methodology has been something that we've used to kind of stabilize, no additional fund costs in those areas. It has cumulative impact, however, and it was not a favorable discussion this year among some of, specifically, some of the departments. And we went back in and tried to make some, some adjustments. You see in the FY '23 that basically the restorations I just talked about, you know, move into the technology and the paraeducator discussion we had. But you'll see in the travel and the custodial are the ones I talked about. But we do, you will see a targeted curriculum writing rate increase for what we pay for summer curriculum writing, and an increase in what we pay our subs. And so those are targeted numbers, and you'll see those as we move through the rest of the budget. But those are like minimal increases. Again, everything's relative in terms of what you determine as minimal, but I'm talking about very strategic increases related to, we're now paying subs $25 more dollars, you know, than we had, and we hadn't increased that rate, and we can't find anybody. So, you know, from that standpoint, it was like very strategic that we have to raise that alignment. And then the curriculum writing rate, I don't think we had adjusted in like three or four years. And we need people to be able to selectively choose during that work over other work, and we need to keep those rates kind of similar. And I can, Dave and I can pull those numbers out for you, should we need to, to kind of look at them with you. So all of that brought you to the budget that we're currently living right now. So that was the 4.94 budget. You can see strategically that it was mostly salaries and the technology, and then the others reductions, and then a minimal transportation increase for the contract.
I have a quick question about Fall Town Meeting.
Yep.
Does the amount that came through Fall Town Meeting go into this 4.94% budget? Meaning?
Well, that's last year's. It goes into this year's because we're, yes, it does go into this year, into the base, right? You can, sorry.
And so when we think about the increase, is it the increase based upon adding that into this budget?
Yeah.
That is, yeah, that for the, for what the actual increase will be, that's incorporated into, into the budget.
And that's on one of the slides we can call out when we get there.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you'll see it.
Oh, maybe I did see.
All right. So that just is the recap of everything that brought us to where we are, and some of those impacts then roll into parts of '23. So let's look at '23. Steve.
So the 5.9% number, go back to the last slide, please. The $57,121,155 is the current budget that we're in right now. And the monies that we, we just discussed in terms of the Fall Town Meeting were added back in to the fiscal '22 budget, and that now is the total with that money in there.
Yep.
Okay. So when we look at a budget increase from the quote "current" year at $57 million to a new number that we'll talk about.
Yep, you'll see it there.
That's the base we're working.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So let's look at '23. In synopsis, so you can kind of pre-think it before we push through it. This budget sustains the cuts of level funds to the building budgets. We've already read it that. It also leverages planned use of grants and revolving accounts, as well as ESAR funds over the next two years. You remember, in the last meeting, we talked strategically about how to spread that funding out so that we could manage this year and next year strategically to kind of see where we end up. It sustains class size targets current to this year. So the key action points where you see the funding impacts outside of salary, you see the technology increase, which was actually $63,480 in the request that John forwarded for his increase. We said, we had said it was 50. His actual real increase based upon his calculations for need for the rollover of maintenance of all the iPads and infrastructure is $63,480. The rate increases that I've mentioned to you, increasing the subs, the guidance extra days is another line item, and curriculum writing, those are areas where we needed to do strategic rate increases, and that is a total of $56,000. You'll see that called out in your budget book in all the pieces, but the total of those impacted rate increases is $56,000.
What are guidance extra days? I don't remember that.
So guidance extra day is a contracted increase, and it's a hourly rate, and they'd work a certain number of extra summer days to come in and like roll schedules, and because they're on Unit A, so they don't work in the summer. But we need them to come in specifically to do data rollovers, class lists, and all the stuff that they do to get the year started that, so they work some strategic extra days. Do you have anything to add to that, Daniel? Okay. So that's, and there was a contract increase to that, that, minimal, but it, I think it ends up being, can you look on that sheet? I don't have it. I think what the actual amount is, it's like tiny.
The guidance?
Yeah, it's, well, 1,321. It's like a minimal increase, but that, but that is there. You see then contracts, which is the transportation contract, the copy of contract, which we've talked about a couple times, and the targeted rate increase for all of the, the actual on-the-ground athletics work that Johanna has articulated, is just the cost of all of the services has just escalated. And that's a strategic request based upon looking at all of her contracts to implement all the stuff they do. Then, of course, you see there are a number of that circuit breaker gap between the funding amount that we had in FY '22 and what we will, and what the costs are for FY '23. And then you know that the year three salary rollover for Unit A is 4%. That's the package of the big pieces that you'll see at play in the budgeting.
The circuit breaker gap, is it real or is it projected?
That is the real number based upon current tuition students. It's like the actual in this moment live.
To give people a sense of, does anyone remember like the last few years? I mean, my, my memory is telling me that that number is typically around $200,000. Is that?
It kind of varies wildly, to be honest. I mean, if we went back, and we could have Dave pull it, and if you look at the, if you look at the actual circuit breaker gap from year to year, it's been, it's never been, I think, less than, in my time, than 100 something plus thousand, but it's been as high as, this is on the higher end. But again, understandably, they're all raising tuitions, costs, there are escalations, and we have, we have more out placements, given the range of, you know, impact for students.
Yeah.
So there's just a whole, there's a whole set of things that play into that.
And we didn't hold the 100,000 because we cut it.
And you didn't hold the 100,000, right?
We normally hold 100,000 for what? For?
Unanticipated tuitions in district, yeah.
And now we have a, a big.
So there's a slide ahead on this, where you'll see the detail on it. But I just think it's good for you to see the numbers encapsulated as, you know, what are the things, other than salaries, you're looking at it right there, the pieces of the budget that, that pull into the total number. And I've got, and the detailed slides are to follow. I'm just trying to keep you kind of in the summary phase. So let's take a look now, just as a reminder, you saw these in the last meeting. These are the school-based budgets, and you can see, each of them, you know, detail those key areas. I don't think this light shows. There's Armstrong, Fails, Hastings, WEC. So there's the building-based budgets. They're all at zero. Those just are rolling forward. You see then your departmental budgets. Similarly, they're all zero except for the athletics, which we've called out there for you.
So these dips that go up and down in the years, do you have a detailed listing of what? And I don't mean distant, detailed of the, the spending. I'm curious about the budgeting process for that up and down. When I look at any of the schools, I see an up and down. Was there initially a list of the expectation of what they would purchase during that year? You see all those things in the requests.
Yep. Always. I mean, you can always, if you look at the end of year report, you can, you do, you have to do a dollar for dollar, you know, crosswalk on all of that annually. So, you know, you might say, like, for example, let's say at the end of the year, you had, you had funding that you then targeted towards buying tables at Fails. We would never, we didn't budget for it, but there would be furniture allotment, and if we ended up with extra, we'd budget it. So at the year-end, that's going to fall onto Fails' side as an actual, at the close of the year. So it's, so, so your, your actual is always going to be not, it's not going to exactly align per se with your, your budget based upon where all the accounting goes by the end. But you're, you're not.
Yeah, so.
I defer to you.
Essentially, historically, you know, the, the budget versus the expenditures vary because of what happens throughout the year. To summarize, we basically ask school leaders to be added to the budget. So there are line items, which, for example, at the high school could be excessively long, 70, 100 line items. You know, from a, I guess, a financial stewardship perspective, I don't kind of micromanage what Brian does at the school related to what line items he spends to. It's more accounting for the bottom line number. And then as the year progresses and the year ends, then he reassesses. So the line items and amounts may change where he says, you know, I had different strategic plans for contracted services, whereas that last year might have been $10,000. This year, he might say, we hired someone, or we did some sort of changes, or this effort that we did is no longer necessary, so it's going to be $5,000. So again, the line items could change, but the bottom number historically doesn't, unless that is communicated by them, or we work with the school, school official to say, we need to make some modifications.
And anyone can see the line items, by the way, in the budget book.
Yes, they're all in the budget book.
I mean, so I went back to look at the budget book. By the way, I really like this layout that we've never seen before in budget presentation. I think it's a good way to look at it. It's what we see in the budget book without the line items, but anyone can go look exactly what's being, it's being spent on. We never really say that, but it's there. And I look at it and sort of see what's going up and what's going down. So that's good. Thank you.
Yeah, it's easier when you're doing this presentation to actually see it all and talk about it than when we give you the spreadsheet on the screen, which nobody can read because it's too small. But all of that detail comes out in the final budget book, definitely. So let's see. Here's the synopsis of the discussion we've had to date, right, around these numbers. So you'll see the no increases across all the district stuff, all the buildings. You see there the targeted increase of the circuit breaker. You see the technology cost, the athletics cost, and the transportation. I mean, that's in a nutshell. That's all of the operational cost increases right there. So there's no new pieces added. There's no additions. It's just the base of contract increase, although, again, you see the technology is an increase. That is definitely an increase back, which won't get us back to where we were, but it gets us much closer. That would bring us to 100 and basically 7,000. So we'd be, you know, we'd be getting closer to the 150 that had been cut. Let's see. All right. If you look at the bottom, Dave again did a synopsis at the bottom, which is helpful, just kind of like there's circuit breaker, technology restoration, the percent of athletics, and the transportation increase, which is a 3% on the CPI. All right? So I think, again, pretty tight in terms of being able to follow along where the, where the increases are. So here's the circuit breaker that we talked about last time, and we spent some time going through. I think it is helpful if Dave steps you through it again, if you'd like. This is the annual circuit breaker slide, where we basically show you the costs and impact for the tuition offset. Do you want to walk them? Do you want to go through it? You've been through it last time.
Greg, do you want him to step?
What's your preference?
No, this is good.
Okay.
I think just, if you, just not necessarily walk through it, I just wanted to highlight that one of the biggest caveats to circuit breaker, which we don't know for, you know, until they actually release a number, is the actually reimbursement rate, which I think is something that's kind of critical. You know, that's really dependent on DESI and however they, at their, at the end of the day, how they finalize what their reimbursement rate will be, based on our submissions of kind of claims. It has ranged, in my experience, anywhere from 60 to 75 is the highest I've ever seen it, but it can go as low as 60. Historically, I've heard it's been lower, but I've actually never done those. But again, that's usually the driving factor as to like what creates a gap or what creates kind of unpreparedness. And again, with the unanticipated arrivals of students in the district that may need services, it kind of compounds the issue, meaning that if you get 68% and then you get two students in, the actual lift could be a lot heavier on the district than planned as opposed to 75%. So it's really, it's really one of those equations that we don't know until the end. And then again, there's such a student impact that we are faced with hardships, and unfortunately, this is kind of the, the perfect storm of having a good reimbursement rate, but having a large number of out-of-district students.
And just for clarity, that is reimbursement on last year's students.
There's always a gap. It's always two years back.
Yeah. So it's, yes, so.
It's not actual.
Yeah, actually, two, two years behind.
Yeah.
So if our out-of-district placements have increased.
If you're looking at FY '21 actual for funding for FY '23, you're always, you're always in arrears by the two years.
Right. So that's an important point as well. Like, it's not based on current numbers. It's based on what had happened, and then reimbursement. Okay.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So then typically, the other thing to think about historically is, if you have that higher rate of out-of-placement number, you will get a higher circuit breaker return as well over time, but you're going to get, it's going to be almost two years before you see it. So when your numbers swing like that, you can have, you have to face the impact where before you get the reimbursable increase. So, you know, if you think about that, if it's a blip, that outplacement, you could be at a much lower outplacement, and if the funding came in from two years ago higher, you'd get a bonus. You know, you just never know. I've never seen that happen, but I'm forever hopeful. I'm forever hopeful. I think the circuit breaker composite is kind of one of the harder funding mechanisms that can have a big impact.
Hopefully, when the SR grant slide out, there'll be circuit breaker coming in to fill some of that, but yeah, two years from now.
So just to go back, you have, you know, that circuit breaker number is really the big hit on operational costs there that you see. And then, oh, sorry, go ahead.
It makes it very hard to cut anything.
Well, and we try to do some of that work, you know, for you as we kind of go through this. So should we have just, that's again, we look at that sustained targeted work, you've got that 4,000, you've got the targeted technology needs, that's maintenance of service as it is, maintaining the current programming we have in place and getting the equipment and the needs that we have to sustain programming. And then you have the process for requests, which we went through two meetings ago, where innovation discussion and needs are always surfaced from all of our buildings annually for things they believe they need to continue to provide robust programming to move into the next year. You know that we looked at a series of requests, we then take all of those requests and work with those teams to put them into tiered requests, and then we work with them to go back and kind of push on those discussions. And in this case, the final recommendation is that we'll move forward two pieces of tier one in this budget recommendation because I can do them budget neutral. And everything else pushes to the future. Hand signals. So again, I think it's important to recognize that, you know, the district is always thinking about innovation support. You see some of the things in there, our requests for return from services that we had cut, the admin position and a couple others, and they will move to tier two and tier three for future consideration. I do think it's important that we continue to be transparent, that we, you know, no position should be a surprise, so we can be like, you know, we can go back into our budget presentations for two years and say, actually, these requests have come forward from multiple years, they're now reaching a point of coming into the budget after work and staging and planning, you know, should they return, but it won't be like, there should be no surprise position that pops up next year that you've never heard of or seen, because you've got this process by which we can go back and say, actually, we've been talking about the world language additional position for two years now. So again, I think in terms of budget projection, but being strategic, these are being deferred to future. Some of them will never show up again, some of them might show up again, but there is a process by which, you know, not everything that's asked for just rolls into that budget, these are things that we work forward based upon best budgeting work. So of those variety of requests, we will sustain supporting athletic trainer support, probably to the range of about $20,000 to $25,000 of contracted services time, which we talked about at the last meeting, where we will use a student activity account to provide the offset to pay for some additional trainer support, to make sure we have the coverage during active games for if somebody has to leave the field and go in and receive treatment, that you still have a trainer or somebody on the field. And oftentimes, you even have multiple games going on at multiple buildings, it gives us a chance, or upper or lower field, just gives us, or sometimes even inside volleyball and outside. So, you know, we want to make sure that we have that coverage, but with a cost-effective approach. I think that the others is the social studies coordinator, which actually, we've talked about now for three years. I believe strongly that, you know, Daniel has presented and continues to and can present the value added of that position to providing strong curriculum development K to six in a core area. The way we will format to be neutral will be that we will basically rest the innovation position and not fill it. So currently, the design of that was that the position was created as an innovation position, that person came out of the classroom, and we used a long-term sub to cover for them. Typically, in the past, then that person would rotate back into their job, which we've done in the past. Joe Barker had done an innovation position for several years and then rotated back into the classroom. He worked on co-teaching innovation work with us and worked in the district and then went back into his classroom. In this case, we like to sustain, after a lot of work and talking about it, sustain the social studies coordinator in the position she's in, but we will rest the innovation position next year and potentially two years if necessary till we see that recovery, and we will use the long, it's basically then neutral, it's the long-term subcontract and the difference between bringing it to a 1.0 FTE. And in looking at the staffing, it's like a minimal offset, so.
Are we missing a long-term sub or a teacher because you're just reallocating to innovation?
Well, so, yeah, that's a great question. So, for example, the long-term sub position will be posted and anticipated that there's been a person actually doing that job for two years that they're pleased with, would have an opportunity to interview for that position and make it a permanent position for them. Again, it has to be posted, and right now, that would be pretty much cost-neutral because an early, it's an early contract person, they're going to, they would get, they would come in lower on the step, it's not that far from where they are right now, so it becomes like a cost-neutral opportunity for us to basically move them from their long-term subpay, which they've been doing for two years, into where they would fall in the unit contract.
Is it coming from a different pot of money? In other words, is it in the sub?
No, the long-term sub and the sub money is all in salary compensation, it's all in that same, it's all in the same budget line.
So I'm confused about the innovation position somehow taking the money from the long-term sub position, and that yet you're going to still have the long-term sub position at $0.
No, the rotation, thank you. No, sorry, I don't mean to confuse you. The innovation position leaves the person, let's do Joe Barker because he did it. So Joe Barker came out of the classroom for two years, was paid his salary to work in an innovation role across the district to basically train co-teaching. He worked K to 12, moving through the district and being helpful, did that for two years. He was paid his salary to do that work. We backfilled his position with a long-term sub. So the innovation position basically cost us a long-term sub position while we let people explore new thinking, new growth professionally, opportunities to demonstrate leadership. So it became an innovation position that let us explore new ideas and new training, and the cost is annually a long-term sub position, which we've had in budget now for like five years, and we use it to cover the innovation position. So basically, what we would do is relinquish in budget that long-term sub position by not filling the innovation position, basically. So that's where you get the savings.
That's nice. Okay.
Sorry, long explanation. That's what happened, I'm like, for me, it was simple in my head, and so I was like, oh, everyone's fine. So that, those are the two that we would, we would bring forward into FY23. Everything else stays on the table. I just want to remind you that, again, as we move towards the final development, that we leverage always a range of important other funding sources and try to be strategic in that. We spent a lot of time in depth talking about this at the last meeting, I just want to do a quick recap. Community ed provides an annual contribution for their use of our space, electricity, paper, supplies, custodial. We take a $200,000 offset across the six schools where they occupy that space from them as an opportunity to offset impact at the district. This current budget carries that for the upcoming year. SR funds are being leveraged, we have $634,790 in SR3, and we will use 340 of it in FY23 to maintain the staffing levels that we want, and we'll hold some funding so we have recovery to see how to stage in, you know, what we need to do in FY24. Kindergarten account fund that we had that we were able to hold funding at the close of last year will be used 450 of it this year in FY23 to cover staffing needs. So Dave did all that work and pulled all those numbers and ran all of that, and when we rolled all that over, we were at 6.15% increase. So, and that was after some additional work to leverage grants, make some other cuts, and do some other types of things that we could already when we did that roll brought us to 6.15. Steve?
So the 201,000 that we're showing here is reduced, is reduced only because we've taken it from other sources.
Yeah, I'll show you on the next slide how I get there.
I'm assuming that it's going to have to be put back in the next budget here.
Depends, I'll show you of the two. So one of the things I try to bring to you is a proposal where we look at, you know, I have to bring forward a percent increase that I believe we have to have to run the district, we bring it forward, we want to make sure it's defensible, and we can be articulate about it on town meeting. You've asked me over the last several years to leverage cost savings where I can and to bring in an advantageous budget that you believe is tight. When we looked at the 6.15, Dave and I went back to the drawing board, I said, I really want to get that under six to bring forward. If you remember back to me saying, the last two years, we've been at 5.6 and have made those cuts to hold that down under four, you know, we can't do that year-over-year, it just keeps making the escalation more complicated. However, I went back in and reduced 201,000, and I'll show you how in a moment, and my final budget is a 5.8 to bring forward to you. I did that working with David, and actually, it's his innovation thinking that made it possible. So we shifted two additional positions onto the preschool revolving. That's good news in the sense that I believe it could be sustainable against tuitions, we'll have to watch that account very closely. And it'll carry one additional teacher and one para educator. So I think we're going to look at it and watch it over time, that it would be able to, it would get close to an exact rollover where we'd be killing off that account each year. That's always difficult because it also is supposed to provide other types of emergency coverages, like we have, you know, something go on in the move in there, or an addition of a class, because we get a lot of three-year-olds who suddenly cycle in, and we'd have to open up a class, for example. So there's things like that where we hold protection in that funding to be responsive because there is, you know, right now, there's one more class growth available there if we had to, it's built for eight sections, because you always have to wait and see what the population of need is that comes forward. So you also hold in that revolving a responsive capacity to come in and set up a classroom. Sorry, I think we're going to be okay, we're going to watch it for the year. It certainly works for FY23, might not work long-term. However, that's one of the reasons why we looked at, you know, again, at some point you might raise tuition, you might, you know, we can leverage that SR money, it gives us ways to manage offset next year while we kind of look at the trajectory of how to manage those, but that isn't a cut, it's pushing the funding somewhere else and in a place that isn't just a one-year option. So that's, I think, I think Dave's best move of the set. The others are just a cut, and we'll talk about that. So then we reduced one tutor of a retirement that I know is going to be pending, and I'm just not going to fill it. I don't know where that will fall across the district, we do have a range of tutors, I just basically articulated that we will go down one, and we will manage to find a way to absorb that in the best possible spot. You know, we had added some tutors using some SR funds, this one is actually in budget and will just reduce by one. If we got into some type of strange emergency, we could opt to use SR funds, I would come back before you with Daniel, and between now and the end of the year, we'll monitor where we are. But I basically eliminated a tutor position, and I'm eliminating one elementary position. So, you know.
What does that do to the numbers that we have looked at when it comes to classes?
That's within the numbers we've looked at, it will change numbers, and it will drive class size up, I don't know where we'll put it, we're just going to basically say we'll go down one, and then we'll track it. And if we cut it and we see an increase in enrollment, or we see a big kindergarten number come in, we basically would have to recover that with SR in a gap and then look at where we are. So by keeping some of that SR money, it lets us reduce and then yet have a stopgap, because again, you're making these weird projections where we're guessing, not to use we're guessing and budgeting, but we're looking at a budget that we're a third of the way through implementing, and you're always then, with all this live enrollment and transitions, you just don't know where you'll end up. So right now, the trajectory is that, working with Daniel and his input, we can make these choices and then track where we are, while we also hold that SR money, that if we got stuck and we, a number's got away from us, we could add a position for one year and then figure out where we are.
Trying to embrace the next slide, and, you know, the money versus the small class sizes, it's just, you know what's best for kids, you know what's best for money. I mean, yeah. And they're on opposite ends of the scale.
Do you want to add thoughts?
No, I think, I think that's fine.
Okay. So that was what I did, Steve, in terms of working with Daniel and David to make a selective choice to try to pull that number down. Again, reminding on the class side, it sustains that, I loaded that slide for you because it's got a backup slide there of class size numbers in that link, I believe you can check later. It's from a previous, it's from our first presentation.
Yeah.
I mean, there's no doubt that the equity of quality experience on the ground is noticeable with the class size numbers we're managing right now, and that's important. So summary-wise, here's where we stand. I like this slide a lot, it's very different than how Irene used to present it, and I just think it's a clean look at the budget summary page for us, and it lets, we can, you know, if this comes to the fruition of your final vote, then basically, we forward this to the town on the deadline, and then we come back in and we've got three weeks to put the budget book in completion together and send them the detail. So let's look at this slide. So you have FY22 there, which we've talked about in depth, and you have FY23, and you see that that's an increase of 3.3 million and the 5.8. It incorporates the 103,000 that was voted at town meetings, you see the base of that number, the 57224156 right here, that's this number. The grand total of FY22 picks up the addition of that voted increase at town meeting in October. And then this is the request, and then that's the difference. That also includes the 200,000 offset from community ed. And I think it's pretty clean when you look at where those increases fall, we've been through them a couple of times now in discussion, it just reiterates it for you. And again, you can see, you know, for those of you that don't look at our work a lot, this 16.92% is all of this. So, you know, you've got 83% is, is all of the salary compensation, package, curriculum writing, all the summer work, everything they do that falls under salaries to run the whole district. You basically have all of your total other operational and maintenance costs in this 16%, and you can see the pieces, parts of that across all this budgeting, and that across all of this other cost, the big hit here is that 630. So that's the work that we've done to date. Do you have highlights to draw there? And Dave has other backup there if you have questions.
No major highlights, I think it's important, and I think she's, Amber's done a great job of articulating some of the, you know, the challenges for not only our new partnership, but, you know, from a new finance person coming in and understanding the, the challenge of the pandemic and the cuts, and then last year's more specific kind of.
You call them surgical.
You know, whimsical strategic cuts.
He called them whimsical, thank you.
But again, the effort's appreciated, but again, it does leave a little bit of a challenge to kind of, it's a, it's a larger hurdle for me to get over. And, you know, with the kind of collaborative mind between myself, superintendent, assistant superintendent, and the business office staff, just their historical knowledge of how things have worked and how things go around the district, and some of the offsets, the revolvings and the use of those, I would say, you know, being six months in, this is, I'm very confident in these numbers, and I don't feel like we're at a point as where we are, pardon the expression, but cutting bone. I feel like we, we did. I feel like we, we did put a good foot forward to maintain a strategic student-centric budget, and at the same time, we put our best foot forward to not, you know, we're cognizant of the impact of the town and to the town's budget as well. So, we wanted to really kind of shine a light on this and have this be our best offering. The next slide, really, I thought was super important to me, was to kind of show the history and the efforts of, of the district and the, prior to my arrival. And I'm not aware, and it would be, you know, and I can definitely pull the data, but it would be nice to see where other districts fall in this comparatively over this, you know, eight years. To be under four for eight years of requests, I think is a huge achievement, not only from a financial standpoint, but from a student success standpoint, I think it's a big deal. So, this, this slide for me was really relevant in terms of where the district is in terms of achievement, but also in terms of financial stewardship.
So, going through the budget as you have, I came up with a million 700,000, which turned out to be add-backs. And what I did to get that number was the 706,000, the 400,000, and then the circuit-breaker impact added to that. Is that correct?
Yes, give me, say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Okay, what I used, in the early slides, you showed 706,000 as, in effect, the add-backs.
Yep.
Okay, you also had another slide that had $400,000 in addition to that.
Yeah.
If you add then to it, the circuit-breaker impact change.
Yep.
That's a million 700,000, which basically just got us to square one.
Yep.
Out of this total budget increase.
Yep.
And so, even though it's a $3 million increase, more than half of it happened as a result of what we had to do in order to satisfy the town's budget during COVID.
COVID and then unforeseen students, you know, and that's our...
If you will, the state, state issues associated with the circuit breaker. So, you know, I mean, you look at 5.8% impact, but more than half of that is actually as a result of having helped to balance the town's budget in a previous year.
Yes.
And as Amber mentioned earlier, we can't continue to do that and still offer quality education with the right number of teachers. Another point that probably would be argued is that this year, if we go to your last slide, this year we have 38 students less across the system than we had in previous years.
Yep.
All the other prior years of budget increases had to do with trying to staff for student increases year over year over year.
Yep.
So, you say, well, okay, then, then why don't we have a smaller increase? If you think about it and you take the 38 kids divided over the number of buildings that we have, so the six buildings, you could say, okay, six times six is 36, and that means that in each building, you know, on average, we've got six new kids, excuse me, six less kids. Now, you divide that six kids by the number of classes that are in most of those buildings, which would be three, now you only got two kids changed in each one of those, those classes. And you can't remove a teacher as a result. And in fact, as we know throughout this process, what we're trying to do is solve problems that we didn't even know we had by virtue of changed staffing to cover different responsibilities that we now have as a result of all the things that are going on in our society. So, the bottom line on this, even though we don't want to say it, it's, it's actually quite well done, I think, even at the, at the percentage that it turned out to be, only because, or in addition to, I guess, the problem of trying to bring us back to, quote, "normal" in, in this environment that we're in now. And we wouldn't all be in this room with masks on if it was normal. So, anyway, I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
And I think that the defense of this, in light of anybody that just says, this is too much money. It may be too much money in, in the real world of, of what happens to the taxes, but in terms of our process, it's, it is what's necessary to maintain the school system at the level that we've had it.
I, I mean, I agree, obviously, because it's my recommendation that I'm bringing forward to you. I think if you look at the trajectory of years, as you've recapped nicely, you know, we had immense growth and were under immense pressure as a town to add staffing, and we managed that while we capped the increase in salaries in partnership with our faculty. So, during those years, we had that, we had the step-only, no COLA, and it leveled our table and allowed us to manage the growth without also managing steady increases in salaries that would have made the budget impact higher. I want to acknowledge that, that collaboration, and that in this last contract where you see the .5 on the last day and the 3.5 rollover next year at the end of this three-year contract still leaves us in a place where, you know, our faculty is now coming back in better alignment, better alignment with those districts around us that we compete with for, for faculty and staff. So, that was advantageous. I also think if you look at the trajectory of the last several years of our budgeting, you remember that we've shifted in focus and done more cutting, where we've really demonstrated, you know, that we're not just adding year over year, that we can draw back, we can draw cuts. If we continue to cut the maintenance and operational services, it just spills over to capital. So, you know, again, there's ways that all of this has to be managed that, you know, I think we're trying to be partners in all of that, and I think we have been strategic. At the same time, I think, you know, this budget brings forward funding that's needed to maintain where we are.
Since we are in a public hearing, this would be the point of the meeting where we would open this public hearing to members of the public for comment on the budget. So, is anyone here tonight who would like to make a public comment on the school's FY '23 draft budget? Okay, you would have to come up to this microphone, please. And you just have to provide your full name and street address for the public record, directly into the microphone, please.
We just...
I'm sorry, you need to sit forward and speak directly into the microphone, and you need to state your...
...the Honorable Mrs. ...
No, that's not the jurisdiction of the school committee.
And I'm wondering, on the ESER funding, as I was...
The actual that is, the 20% of... Some kind of... Teaching, and I understand that... Do you want, do you want to... CRT, right? There's 20% of one? Critical race theory? Is that ESER funding in the... And then you don't have, the...
Are you talking about some of the funding being for mental health services and social emotional learning?
Social emotional... CRT.
I'm going to correct you and tell you that social emotional learning is not CRT. Social emotional learning has to do with mental health and students feeling comfortable and safe in the school environment.
Thank you.
We've shared, at every meeting, we share about the social emotional learning that is happening in the district, but I would point you to...
Sure, you can, if you email Daniel or give us a call over at the office, you can always request, we can give you a nice look at the curriculum, the social emotional curriculum we use. ESER funding provides for recovery across a range of options. We currently applied for ESER funds, we'll speak about Westboro. Westboro applied for its ESER funds for staffing, for paraeducators and teachers to lower our class size numbers, for every student in district to make sure that teachers could teach at a high level, to provide one-to-one instruction in math, literacy, science, and social studies, and all of our curriculum areas to smaller classes. So, our option here in Westboro would be to leverage that funding to provide staffing. So, if you look back at our slides, I don't know, did you change that, Daniel? Right, I can't, my clicker's not working. Sorry. Sorry, I just was going to hop back and show you so you can see that we definitely called it out, so it's right there. So, there you go. So, the ESER funding there in the middle, it's got 600,000. So, we are going to break that in two chunks because we mean, so right now, we brought in some new teachers to lower class size number into this year for FY '22 while kids were coming back in after having been out of school a lot. And so, I think we staffed three additional positions and two tutors to help kids who were behind, using ESER funds for FY '22. Next year, we're maintaining those class size numbers and using the 341,000 of that money to keep those numbers as low as possible in terms of class size so that students are getting the help they need.
Yeah, I can really understand why you want money.
Yeah.
Budget, and they don't just... Sliding...
Yeah. Yeah, no, I think certainly we remain always comfortable to touch base with you around curriculum. These funds aren't targeted for that.
Because I understand that the 20%...
Yeah, and I, yeah, no, 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 I appreciate, I appreciate...
The 20% is for, I have the language, I have the language right here, it's for academic recovery.
Yeah.
So, it says, minimum funding, 20% of total allocation must be used to address learning loss and disproportionate impact of COVID-19. So, it doesn't have anything to do with either SEL or critical race theory.
Yeah, we used it just to provide academic support to students to recover from the losses of being at home.
I could see how that could be very concerning, though, by the way, the fact that you believe that it was that, and...
Well, no, I believe that 20% of it, of the, of what the Fed has given you has to be earmarked in a certain way.
Yeah, yeah.
And it has to be earmarked for...
For, yeah, for learning loss.
Learning loss is how they dictate that 20%. So, we're using it by just getting additional staffing to help students who have suffered from loss of learning during the time that we were at home.
Yeah, maybe I can check with you guys as far as the other stuff later.
Yeah, no, we'd be very comfortable meeting with you about that.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Would anyone else like to come forward to make comments? Okay.
Amanda O'Reilly, 13 Matthew Drive. Just a quick question, if someone could explain what the 49,000 for our school committee is spent on, was aligned, thank you.
Sure, we attend professional development conference each year, so it's money for that. Most of it gets returned back usually.
But also legal, or...
Legal.
And legal.
Yeah, so, can you pull up the school committee slide? I don't have it in this presentation, it was in the last one.
I guess before we get into this in any detail, I'll just say that the members of the school committee don't get paid a nickel.
I think I cut it, Dave. I did cut it, I'm sorry. I think the fees for collective bargaining are carried in there, and legal fees when we have personnel cases or support needs for lawyers around contracts and stuff, so we don't typically tend to spend it. I think it goes, it often goes back to the bottom line at the end of the year for other things if we don't have a lot of legal costs, and then other years it's gone over. You're welcome.
Anyone else like to come forward to ask questions or make comments on the FY '23 proposed budget? I'm practicing my wait time. So, school committee members, would like to open it up to anyone on school committee who would like to make any additional comments?
I'm just going to say that the COVID cuts, I mean, it's hard to, to look at this meeting and only see the one presentation, or even the five presentations in the last, you know, months, because such the impact was, the cuts that were going on in the last two budgets, one, the spring of 2020, where the town and the school department were together in cutting the budget pretty drastically to protect the financial stability of the town, and then last year's cuts were pretty significant as well. So, it's hard to see that, even though she talked about what hasn't been restored, but that tells a big part of this story. And without that, it feels like a very high percentage. For someone who's been on this committee for five years...
I've been here five years. Yes, you have.
You'll lose track.
Yeah, you know, have seen that many budgets, and this is pretty big for me to take in, but I understand where it's coming from, and I can't imagine where you cut that circuit-breaker and the salaries is just core, it's just the core. And, and we needed to, but you should know that in the, in February of 2020 is when the teachers' contract was sealed, and that brought our town to more normal levels of...
Parity, parity with other school districts. If we go back to the slide you had with the, I think it's the last slide, David.
That one?
No, not that one, the one that showed percent increases over time.
Oh, yeah, sorry, my, my clicking skills are off, there we go.
If you look at the bottom line, which says series one, we held, in effect, we held the teacher's salary to relatively 2%, I think, for five years, 2% increases, which in effect was as a result of negotiations with the union under a specific theory of, of salary increases. What we ran into was that we were so effective in doing that, that other salary structures in other towns around us were potentially causing problems in terms of teachers wanting to go somewhere else where they would get paid more. And since our whole effort was to not only try to save the taxpayers' money, but also to, to create a very good educational staff within the schools, we had to catch up. And that's really what Lisa was saying in terms of the settlement for a three-year union contract.
Right, I agree, I think we invested in our, in our faculty to retain our, our faculty and be competitive with surrounding towns, as everyone said. Also, this budget is, does seem high, higher than I've seen, but it does maintain our student-teacher ratios, and I think that's most important at this point. And then to Dave's point, he mentioned comparable districts, and usually when we go to the finance committee meeting and the board of select board meeting, we, you know, compare this, all this work to other towns' work, and it really shows year over year that we get a lot of bang for our buck, you know, with our percent increases and, and what we offer, so, thank you.
We'll pull together over the next couple of weeks, Dave and I met today, and we started talking about the fact that after we approve the final budget, we'll move into the comparable lists and the per people expendings comparisons, we'll pull all that data, and it goes into the presentation that we use with FinCom, with Select Board, and different community groups that we meet with so we can be clear with them that we manage, again, across how many districts are there in the Commonwealth, 350-plus. And typically, your community sits in the top 20 standardly year over year and is ranking with districts like Lexington and Wellesley, and districts that are spending even more, and that we're able to remain competitive and to try to bring a high-quality service to our students and the trajectory of their work towards going to strong colleges and professional next steps that they want to embrace while really keeping our costs smack in the middle of the bell curve of those groups over the, certainly the time of my years here. And we'll pull that data again and look at it and provide it as an overview, and I think the town has always been really able to look at that and understand the effectiveness of the funding to be cost-effective.
Thank you. So, this committee will be voting on the final budget at our next meeting in two weeks on December 15th, and so, send your budget questions between now and then to Amber, or to me, or to David, and we can get back to you about that. At this point, I will make a motion to end... At this point, I will make a motion to end this public hearing. A second. Thank you, Sarah. We have to do a roll call vote to end it.
Do they, yes?
London, yes.
Edinburgh, yes.
Dorit, yes.
And Vincent, yes. So we are out of our public hearing and back to our regularly scheduled programming. And we will continue with our school committee member reports. Amrugu, do you have anything?
No, not yet.
Okay, Lisa?
I forgot, that's where we left it. I have nothing.
Okay. Steve, do you have building stuff or anything else?
Yeah, something very short. Obviously, with Fails being occupied now, as far as the Fails building itself is concerned, we're working on punch list items, glitches that we find as we start using all the equipment in there, which, you know, most of it works just as planned. Some of it doesn't, and we will get that fixed. As far as the committee, the building committee is concerned, we're now focused on phase two, which is the demolition of the old school, spring planting. Obviously, we missed the fall with certain parts of the project. And the final site work to restore the playing fields, which is the major part of what's left to do. As you've heard from others, so far, so good as far as the occupancy of the new building. And I think you saw some of the pictures that were in the budget presentation from that school. We hope to have some kind of a public viewing, if you will, access to the new fails so that, you know, John Q. Public and parents can see what their money bought for them. And lastly, the Sprinkle Project, which is also going on at Hastings, is about 58% complete, and that work continues until they finish it, obviously. And so far, both projects are on budget. And we expect to be able to close out Fails with probably a very small surplus, but certainly not a request for more money, unless something goes bump in the night that we don't know about right now.
There's been lots of bumps, so.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sure we will.
Well, there always is on any construction.
With that amount of outdoor work to do.
Yeah, and that site was the most difficult, I think, to build on in the town, which is probably why the school, the original school was built there, because it was a bad site. Therefore, cheap land.
And Steve, is there a timeline for demolition of the?
For finishing this stuff? Yeah, basically, towards the end of December, they will do the environmental remediation in the building. Most of the stuff that was in there, such as asbestos and other things, had been removed. But obviously, when you open up things to basically demolish the place, there is a belief that there is stuff that's hidden. In particular, some of the things that we know have asbestos in it is the caulking around the windows on the outside, the glue or stickum that holds the boards to the wall. In other words, when you glue a mirror on or something like that, that adhesive frequently has asbestos in it. And we don't know whether it does or it doesn't. And certain other areas that are not accessible to the public also may have stuff in it that needs to be remediated. The thought on that is it'll take about three weeks to a month, and then the building will be demolished. So we're talking about end of January, early February. And of course, all of that stuff is weather-dependent. If we have a nice winter, we'll be done with it fairly quickly. If we don't, then it'll take longer. Likewise, in the spring, for the field work, the site and the soils are really tough to work with. If it's a dry spring, God help us. If it is, then the material will be easy to use and rework. We can't actually spread it and compact it if it's wet because it's high fines in it. It's a clay kind of material. And so, in which case, we'd have to wait for it to dry out. So all of those things are variables that will either get us done sometime in March, or if it's bad, sometime in June or July. And so we'll see. And of course, the schedule that we're talking about, if it runs that late, then that's one of the things that goes bump in the night in terms of additional time for staffing and so on. So, anyway.
Thank you.
Let's hope everything works out.
Thank you. And then I just wanted to say thank you to everyone who worked on the Turkey Trot. It was a big success. It was really nice to see everyone out there. Ended up being a really nice morning to see one in their orange shirts running around. So that was really fun.
The weather, the weather always helps.
Yeah, the weather was great and raised a lot of money. So thank you for everyone who participated and everyone who helped organize, including Sarah. And I also want to thank the organizers of the holiday stroll that happened this weekend, with the tree lightings, and it just looked like a really nice community turnout. Lots of groups participating, lots of businesses participating. So thank you to everyone who organized that. So we are gonna move on to our next agenda item, which is citizens' requests. Can I see a show of hands for anyone here tonight who would like to address the school committee during citizens' requests? Okay, thanks. Just trying to manage our time here. So just as a reminder, we have a policy regarding citizens' requests. And some important pieces of this policy include that you must be a current resident of Westboro to speak at our meetings. Each speaker will be allowed up to three minutes to speak to the school committee. And comments longer than three minutes may be presented to the presiding chair before or after the meeting. So you are welcome to hand me additional comments in writing now, or send them via email, and I'll share them with other school committee members. Public comment by residents at this meeting is not a discussion, debate, or dialogue between individuals and the school committee. It is an individual's opportunity to express an opinion on issues within the school committee's authority. Our role is to listen carefully to what you have to share with us tonight. Clapping, cheering, calling out, or any other noise following a speaker is not allowed. And when it's your turn, you'll state your name and street address and speak directly into the microphone so that everyone at home can also hear you, because this is a public meeting. So I can start with, I'll start with someone from the back. If someone wants to start. Okay, come on up. Thank you.
I wrote it down this time.
Okay.
Okay, Lauren McDonald.
And you can just, you can turn the microphone towards you.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Sorry. There you go. Lauren McDonald, 118 West Main Street. I wrote this before the new town mandate had come out and Amber's comprehensive plan through the email for January 10th. So it's a little old, but the sentiment stands.
Okay, and just, I'm sorry, but that microphone, you have to like literally have it very close to your face. Thanks.
Yeah, that's good. I am here tonight to request that, as you consider the flexible masking waiver tonight for Gibbons and the high school, to implement a start date at least a week following winter break. I want to be transparent and share that my children are not yet at Gibbons or the high school. I've heard from some community members say that because of this, I shouldn't have a voice or an opinion on the issue. That flexible masking does not affect my children, but that's not true. My children may not go to those schools, but they have friends with siblings who do. They live in the same community and go to the same places as older students. They are still exposed to them in some way. At the last school committee meeting, someone had mentioned that older siblings can choose to wear a mask to protect their younger siblings. And some of them may do that. But I have to be honest, from listening to some of the conversations in the community, conversations in which parents talk about how their children don't wear masks anywhere besides school, conversations where they admit that they encourage their children that they don't have to wear masks, where they blame masks for causing emotional distress, but also admit that the amount of time they actually wear masks is incredibly limited. These families also have younger siblings in my children's schools. I am not confident that they will mask to benefit anyone else. Some have expressed that if older students are worried, they have the choice to wear a mask. However, we all know that wearing a mask is not to keep the mask wearer from getting sick, it's to prevent the mask wearer from spreading germs. Wearing a mask means that we are taking care of each other. Our children aren't fully vaccinated yet. Please set the precedent that we care about their health and safety and that we can help take care of them just a little bit longer, just a few more weeks. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And did you state your name and street address?
Lauren McDonald, 118 West Main.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Someone else from the front over here who would like to come up?
Hi, Amanda O'Reilly, 13 Matthew Drive in Westboro. I guess I should first start by saying that you all do a very difficult job, and we do appreciate that. And I know that I give you a fair amount of grief within my own private group and between the emails I send. But I also want you to know that that's part of what school committee is about. And that's why I'm not on the school committee, because I can't give the time that it takes to do what it takes to be on a school committee. So I just hope you realize that that's part of the job. And when we give criticism or we give praise, it's part, it comes with the territory. So I just hope that you realize that I like all of you individually as people, but that the, you're in a role as a school committee member. I just want to talk really briefly about the risks. The previous speaker just spoke a little bit about outbreaks and protecting children. I think we talked about that earlier tonight, that most of the outbreaks, or all of the outbreaks, are happening in the elementary schools and in Mill Pond. You can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't know of any outbreaks in the high school or at Gibbons. From looking through the COVID dashboard, there have been 160 cases of children ages zero to nine. There have been 260 cases of children ages 10 through 19. There have been zero hospitalizations of those 420 children. Our entire town has had only five hospitalizations since February of '21. That's a .0002% risk that you will get COVID in Westboro and end up in a hospital. And it's a 0% risk if you're a child. What we do know about risks from COVID protocols were pretty alarming from the last meeting. We know there are more than 109th graders who are in some sort of mental health crisis or in need of mental health care. That's just from one grade. We can probably extrapolate from that that there are 100 kids in the other grades as well at the high school. So you're looking at 30% of the student population that's suffering from mental health issues. We know that teachers are finding it hard to teach because they've told Superintendent Bach that some of them are having a hard time. We know that children are having a hard time learning. We also know that masks send a message that the air breathing is toxic, the air breathing could be dangerous, and that it creates an atmosphere of fear when you see everyone around you masked up. It covers the smiles, as we saw in Hopkinton. The students, even the ones that kept the masks on, all spoke about how nice it was to see and connect with people without masks.
Well, that's three minutes, so I'll just let you wrap up your statement.
So who are we protecting? The seniors aren't masking. The rest of the town isn't masking. You're at Turkey Trot, the turkey shoot, the Good Scouts without masks. Desi said we're safe. You know, it's time. The kids have done their part. And I just hope that you will unmask, or at least just allow masked choice. We're not asking for, you know, people to be unmasked. We just want choice. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else from the back would like to come forward? Hi.
Hi. Hello, I'm Danielle Jordan, 30 Lackey Street. Thank you, first of all, for letting me have this opportunity to speak and letting all citizens have the opportunity to speak to you guys. Have the utmost respect for everything you all do. I know I don't have the mental capacity to withstand everything that you guys do, working jobs outside of this and doing this on top of it all has to be just incredibly overwhelming. So thank you for doing it. You also come under a lot of fire, which has sometimes come from me. So I do appreciate you still giving me the opportunity to voice my opinion. I am for masking to continue as it stands now in Westboro for all ages, all schools, all classes. In light, especially in the last few days, the Omicron variant, which is still not very well-known as to the contagiousness of it and the actual strength of it. So until we know more about that, I think it'd be best to just lay some caution. In the schools now, there's not really any opportunity to social distance. And I don't know any one person in any society that would want to go back to hybrid or remote learning, myself included. Not being able to social distance with 20, 23 kids in a classroom and no masks, that stops flying. I mean, not just COVID. There are a lot of germs. People's immune systems are compromised more than ever now because they haven't been exposed to much of anything. So if you, you probably know people who've gotten sick with just a common cold or flu right now that seem to be more miserable than ever, because they're just not as able to fight it off when our immune systems are at their best. The contagion can be carried by children, by adults, to anybody. So my issue is not that children don't get that sick from COVID, or children don't die from COVID. They do. Do most of them? No, they don't. And that is awesome, because I know I don't want to see my child affected with this. They can, though, bring those, the contagion to other people, more vulnerable people in the community. I think it's a responsibility we need to teach our children to be caring of others. And it's not a mask that is going to damage their mentality. It's that feeling of, was it me? Was it me who hurt somebody? Did that person's grandmother die because of me? I don't want my kids asking those questions. Anyway, I don't know what else to tell you. It's probably three minutes anyway. Again, appreciate the opportunity to speak. I know you have a very difficult decision. I don't envy you for it. And good luck.
Thank you. Kelly, do you want to?
I'm gonna read.
That's okay. We do that, too. You just have to speak directly into the, into the microphone.
I gotta be able to see.
Okay. You have to literally speak like right into the microphone so you can just scoot over, or you can.
You can just take it out and hold it.
Yeah, you can take it out if you want to. That's fine.
I think you'll be the most comfortable if you do it that way.
Yeah.
There you go.
All right, just.
Kelly Bentley, 26 September, second. I'm here tonight to urge you to allow students at Westboro High and Gibbons Middle School to have a choice of whether they want to mask or not. They are now in their third year of school restrictions. As you are aware, in October, a group of pediatricians declared the kids' mental health crisis a national emergency. At the last school committee meeting, I was dismayed to hear the results of a survey of WHS ninth graders indicating that a third of them identified as needing help with mental health concerns. I can only imagine what the outcome is in the other grades, and as a parent, I'm very concerned. I can, students have done their part to keep their community safe despite COVID being a risk to them. Sorry. It is time to shift the attention to them, and their mental health must be the priority. Students spend a large percentage of their waking hours in school or activities associated with schools. It is here that they form social connections. Masks are an impediment to hearing, seeing smiles, facial cues, rapport building, and hinder social connection between their peers and teachers. A smile can mean everything. Masks make talking more difficult. If I pull out my mask. I'm guessing that is why, until tonight, most of you are in these meetings without masks on. It's just easier. It's easier to talk without them. At a recent Board of Health meeting, Superintendent Bach commented that teachers have expressed that it's difficult to teach in masks. Masks are not benign and are questionable benefit. Cloth masks have shown to be of no benefit, and this is what the large majority of students wear. Or at least, that's what I see them wearing. And who are they protecting? At this point, everyone down to age five has had the opportunity to be vaccinated by the time January 10th rolls around. I think that would be the case. Teachers have been able to get boosted if they choose. One antiviral was recently approved, and another is on the way.
One antiviral was recently approved and another is on the way, which is amazing. Thus far, COVID policies have been shaped around the anxieties and fears of adults. This is no way to formulate policy. We must pivot and make policies based on data going forward. Those who are anxious have the choice to wear a high-quality mask if they wish. It comes down to choice for all. Outside of school, our students are leading a mask-free life. Adults are also leading a mask-free life, attending various community events. I see a constant barrage of pictures on community Facebook pages, including some of our most high-risk residents. It's a hard pill to swallow after my student spends over six hours a day in school with a mask on. COVID is not going away. It's time to shift the priority to our students. They need us, we should be doing everything in our power to give them as normal a school experience as possible and I urge you to do it soon.
Thank you.
And thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks. Anyone else? Yep, come on.
I'd like to meet you guys.
Hi.
You're going to have to speak directly into that microphone. Thank you.
I'm Danielle McPherson, 32 Fisher Street. Not an elite house in any way. I'm speaking here tonight because I care about our school community as a whole. So thumbs up to the decreasing of the stress for the high state exams. Expect an email because I'm like, how do we even have those? Adult life, I can't remember the last time I had a high state exam as an adult. So I also come because people whisper things in my ears and one of the things being whispered is now that the Fails building is open, will redistricting for the elementary schools begin before next year or when will that be? That's just me plugging in one year to be out. And then I just keep hearing this thing about like normalcy and like one side saying, you guys are so fear-based and then the other side says, no, you're so fear-based. And I feel like, can we all be a little afraid? And then I will end with trusting the school boards, the teachers, our students to figure this out. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the school committee during citizens' requests? Okay, I want to thank all the speakers tonight for coming forward and sharing your feedback. I know that's not easy. I know some of you don't, are not comfortable with public speaking, so I appreciate you taking the time to come to our meeting tonight to share with us your comments and feedback. So thank you so much. And also thank you to everyone who has continued to email us and share feedback on a variety of issues and topics. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Asabet Valley Collaborative First Quarterly Update. Amber, you want to just share a little bit about that?
Yeah.
But Danielle can just open that up. It's a for-the-record report to you. It's always an important part of process that they give you for reports across the span of the year. This one gives you a current update on performance benchmarks, highlights to where they are, who's included in that collaborative group as of now. And I've certainly spoken about, if you scroll down, you know, she prepared a report that I think gives you highlights around areas where they've had impact and then you look towards major priorities of the year they're in. They're really looking at a lot of reconciliation of billing and issues with busing and they had a pretty serious funding gap that they were trying to go back and close around FY21 where they had some real issues with outstanding payments and then also trying to look at the new contract pending for Vanpool. So lots on their plate around transportation. I think they feel like they have an advantageous contract settled coming in for Vanpool moving forward. So she's just provided an update to you. I think again, it's a read and inform. I don't think we need, obviously have a lot to cover tonight, I don't think we need to spend too much time on it. I would say, certainly I'm chairing that committee this year, it's my turn, so if you have any questions about it, if you read the report, you can reach out to me, I'd be happy to talk with you about it and just give you a sense about the things they're working on. They have a building project renovation for their 18 to 22-year-old program, they're trying to renovate a space, having a lot of trouble, you know, getting contractors, getting costs, getting a plan, so that's a struggle. They, they are facing in a microcosm all of the things that we have. And then I think they've had some pretty serious transitions in staffing. So, you know, all of those as a composite make running the collaborative challenging. They also are at different satellite spots, you know, that are spread out. There's always a lot on the plate of an active collaborative. They continue to have some robust PD options as that springs back, but again, over the last two years, as we've all coped and managed with what we've been dealing with, we weren't doing as much active PD and, you know, some of the forward-looking kind of project work where you'd go to the collaborative and contract with them or use their space. So all of that is in the same rebound for them but has real impact. A good percentage of their budget is targeted towards transportation and they were gaining momentum around benefits for the PD. So those both took a big hit and so they're recovering from that. I imagine the next update will be the budget and you'll see it and I'll step you through that with more kind of focus, but they remain fiscally sound. I think they're a strong organization. We don't have a lot of students programmed with them right now, but certainly at different times in our future, we might. We have a few students there who are really getting some very nice fine programming. So that's my report for tonight. For your record, take a look at it and if you have very specific questions, I can answer them, you know, just give me a call.
Okay, and this is just to accept the report?
Accept and receive, yes. Steve?
Yeah, if you could scroll back up to the first page. Stop with the map. One of the things that I wanted to point out because we have a lot of people in the room is that the collaborative for us has saved us a lot of money in the ability to buy equipment and supplies in bulk because I think the count is 16 towns. Who collaborate within this group and as a result of that number of towns, we have a fairly large buying power when we go out and get stuff. And so it's not only a benefit to us, but obviously to the rest of the towns that you see. And there are other things that we, as the Westboro School District, wish to do with them, which would also help us, I think, in terms of things that are big-ticket items for us. One is busing and busing contracts. We've discussed kind of in and out ways that we could have the collaborative help us participate as a group. There was one thing that struck me though in the text, the bullet items down below and actually two, now that you mentioned the, the effort to try to close the budget. I would assume that since they have really no flexibility, the only way they could is to come back to the districts and ask for more money. But we'll wait and see how that comes out. The other one, I think, is in the last group of bullets, the phrase tension. And I was interested very much in, in what really was implied in the issue of tension and I assume it's between the staff and the, and the organization. Could you explain that a little bit?
Sure. One of the things that they've been wanting to do is to innovate their anti-racist and more diversity-oriented focus on really create an environment that is equitable and diverse and they've really tried to do a lot of work on the ground around racial justice and innovating within their staff while they also were looking to diversify hiring. And I think they've done some tremendous work. They've also then been providing a range of cultural proficiency trainings, which we've participated in some levels. But in some of that work, as they've surfaced areas, they've had a range of strategic disagreements as well, where they really wanted, some people wanted to head in a different direction or felt that the focus of the organization had become solely centered on that with regard to staffing and that they had lost some areas of focus. Those are opinions. You know, I think the program is very strong and I think that the mission for innovating a truly equitable work environment, Kathy actually as the director, had re-leveled a lot of the financial staffing plans to create a better equity across earnings and you know, some other very innovative, really progressive and thoughtful approaches to working with her staff. And I think the trajectory of those changes just create some sense of transition for some people who feel like this is now their foremost invested area of focus and they're all in and other areas where people really wanted to head in a new direction. So some of that staffing, again, is a natural tension to change that they've all embraced and I think they're in a good place. But I think that she's been very transparent about some people really wanting to, you know, head in a different direction. So that certainly surfaced a lot of changes in terms of the allocation of staffing. They've been able to do that while maintaining very robust programming, but I think she just wants to be in a full transparent place that change is hard and that the teams are working on it.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. So we'll move on to our last agenda item, which is the COVID update slash vote on timeline for implementation of flexible masking. So I had recommended at our last meeting that we use our typical protocol of looking at a policy to consider its changes and amendments at that meeting, think about it and then come forward at the following meeting to vote on that policy. And just as a reminder, the school committee creates and sets policy. That's one of the few responsibilities that we have. The superintendent is charged with supervising the implementation of those policies across the district. So Amber, did you want to begin with a review of the plan?
Sure. I was taking a couple notes. I was, I'm not just fishing around on my phone, I was trying to pull up my current numbers to see if I could give you an update as part of this, but I can't, so I'll stick with where I am. So thank you. I think the synopsis, this is the document that we've used to share out to parents, to faculty and to you as well, to frame the approaches that we would like to take as we move towards flexible masking. I think that we worked with a variety of groups on developing this. I presented it to you, we looked at that kind of picture for what would it look like to move towards effectively managing an environment of flexible masking at Gibbons and the high school and then also being clear that for me as superintendent, I would look to then off-board each of our schools as they reach that 80%. So as Mill Pond, Fails, Hastings, as each of our schools reaches that benchmark of vaccination rate, I'll follow this protocol, apply and then off-board those schools following the same process. So it's a plan that is both to Gibbons and high school for now and then would be our maintained implementation process between now and when all of our schools are flexible masking. Certainly the DESC continues to make additional adjustments to their thinking. You know, they have provided, again, the initial, as we revisited, you know, they changed their timeline from where we thought we would be in the fall. We've been in compliance with their current timeline and they've currently asked people to remain masked outside of those that have off-boarded and applied for offboarding until January 15th. I think that was a confusing message to push out because it basically was already the protocol they had in place, which was you would unmask when you could and those people that could off-board could move forward in our interpretation when we checked with DESC, that was what they said. But I think it created a sense of a next benchmark for people that, you know, again, became another touch point for a lot of the discussion. That discussion certainly was a touch point of discussion for the Board of Health, for the Director of the Board of Health, for faculty at Gibbons and the high school at a much higher rate than at elementary school. As some people have mentioned, you know, I think we have more teachers looking to the opportunity in the future to unmask at our elementary schools than we have in the data for Gibbons and the high school where they have articulated, you know, feeling more comfortable with the structure of how things are currently running. All of that was at play around the discussion of this document and the development of that document and my recommendation to you at the last meeting that I would be recommending that we use this protocol and that we would move forward January 10th after the holiday, five days, which would be then plus the weekend, the seven-day window of where you're supposed to quarantine should you have exposure. So I, you know, again, that's, that's the rationale for the five days post-holiday where masking would give us a window for anybody who had traveled. When they come back from the New Year, they would pick up that Sunday and then the five school days and then the Saturday and the Sunday bringing you to eight full days so that anybody who surfaces as symptomatic or anything would have an opportunity to be detected and to remain at home. And that, that would make the 10th the selective date of my recommendation that we would move forward. I want to recap and be transparent that I was also clear that, and I want to acknowledge that I think the 10th was a date that surprised you. I didn't mean to surprise you. It's never my intent. I know several of you articulated that you felt I surprised you when I shifted to a recommendation of the 10th versus the 6th, which would be on Monday. And we had discussion at the meeting at that time as to why, because it wasn't grounded in any specific numbers and I acknowledged that. And I think it's an important part of your discussion and I just wanted to recap it here. Certainly we've heard a range of very thoughtful comments. I want to be clear that I look forward to unmasking kids and moving forward to all of the normalcy that they do deserve. I think that at the same time, I'm trying to strike the balance as the person who implements those changes with all of our faculty across district to keep them all moving forward to a place where they come forward with us and, you know, in looking at all of those conversations and in talking to the principals at Gibbons and the high school and the feedback from the faculty at those two schools, wanted to provide the time and energy for them to recognize that this change will happen and that they, we gave them time to have discussions with people that have a range of concerns. We've been conducting those through HR meetings and have had very good conversations with faculty who have questions at Gibbons and the high school. And we're finalizing, tracking the data on students who we would have to monitor if they aren't able to unmask because they're not vaccinated. So I wanted time to complete that with respectful conversations and opportunities to talk with students and with faculty as needed. So for me, part of the recommendation for the 10th was an implementation choice. It was also recognizing that I wanted to provide the emotional space for faculty who were not comfortable to be prepared because they are the people that bring their energy each day, five days a week, to stand in classrooms with students every day. And I want to keep them in a good place and I want them to feel that we hear and support them to do their best work in their job. And I understand that that is a selective choice, it's not based on data. The data right now at Gibbons and high school indicates you could unmask and I'm not, I'm not trying to represent that it isn't, I want to be clear. But I also think that each of these are hard choices and any recommendation I have always said is about remaining in relationship with everybody who's a participant, participant in this process. So for me, faculty and staff are people I care about immensely, as you do, and you want them to thrive and recognize that they have to come to work, they want to come to work. Students have to come to school and I recognize that, so it's their work as well. So I consider that the time that our Gibbons and our high school students have to come to school and it's their workday, they deserve the same rights for flexible masking and they have earned that right. So I recognize that I selected a date that moved the needle, passed vacation and I think it took into account all of the pieces of that. The feelings, the time for preparation, the recognition that we have to move forward, the acknowledgement that the Board of Health and the Director of the Board do not support unmasking right now and we've tried to remain in relationship with that board as well. And all of that constitutes really complex decision-making and one of my jobs is to make recommendations to you and your job is to support that or modify it. So where we came down on that, I think it's important to try to acknowledge that I don't think any of them are perfect decisions. It doesn't make me happy to see kids masked, it doesn't make me content to see faculty masked. I'm not happy being masked. I'm not happy being masked. I would welcome flexible masking. I do not believe that to be safe right now, I need to be masked in this room, but that's a personal opinion and a personal choice that I make when I'm not at work. At work, we're charged with creating structures that meet expectations of wide arrays of opinions and needs. And embedded in our schools, we do have people with medical needs that need time to be considered. And I absorb that risk of telling a faculty member that they're safe when I don't own the medical knowledge to know if they are. And that's a big responsibility, and I acknowledge that it's not a comfortable one. I believe that in selecting that date, I selected something that I felt I could stand behind, that acknowledged all of those groups. But it wasn't, and I said at the time, based on data. And if you want to make that decision based on data alone, outside of the relationship work that we've committed to as well, then you can vote differently. And I want to be clear that the date was based on my sense that this would give the faculty time to move forward respectfully and that students knew that we had set a clear date and that we would reach it with them. So that was what the recommendation was based upon. I acknowledge it's all imperfect, as we all are, and, you know, I want to be clear that I don't feel bad about it. I do think it's a smart recommendation, or I wouldn't have made it. I'm not comfortable with it on either side. Disappointing people and living in that zone of people being disappointed with our decision-making or resenting that decision-making or feeling that they're not heard is not our goal. But we've known over the last two years, no one's happy. So, you know, we want to live in the zone of trying to do the best we can to live in the middle. And I guess that was my hope in making the recommendation to you. That's my only comments on tonight. I believe that the actual status of the implementation is agreeable to people, and they understand how it would work. And I think we could move forward on the 10th successfully. So those are my updates for now. I don't think there's anything within the content we need to address. I do want to make one last comment, though. What looks effortless on the side of implementation to people that come and go in our buildings is not effortless on the other side. And I have to represent the nursing staff, the teaching staff, and the administrative staff, who spend a lot of time making calls, talking to parents, implementing test and stay, modifying schedules to meet those needs. All of that is, will increase potentially, and there are people that are feeling overwhelmed by that idea. So I want to recognize that they were part of that voice as well, because it's not effortless to then track those students and faculty that have to mask. We accept that we will do that, but it will add work and need, and we'll have to increase test and stay and contact tracing. It's hard to embrace that after the two and a half years we've been through as well. And I have to ask that work of the staff and that they have to make it happen seamlessly while still keeping kids and everybody feeling good about the work going on. So it doesn't come without complexity, and I just feel like I have to recognize the amount of work it takes to get to, you know, the place where we can move forward. So those are my comments for tonight.
Thank you for articulating all of that. Appreciate it. Would I go first? Is that okay?
Yeah, go ahead. I wanted to start by saying there have seemed very extreme sides to this decision. And I think my only recommendation to the two sides is that you should be kinder to each other. Just be kinder to each other. I want to say that before I state what I wanted to state. And I did prepare it because I looked back at our last meeting and felt that I was not clear, and I want to be really clear. I am in favor of flexible masking. I'm not sure where my opinion got lost in translation, but I admit it was. Was it the Community Advocate article, taking my words out of context? He's a good writer, has written many good articles, but my words were taken out of context. Or was it that I've been wearing a mask while my colleagues have not? I think the bizarre disconnect is that if I am for flexible masking, that I would not wear a mask. And yet, the very nature of flexible masking is a choice between wearing one or not. I am in favor of flexible masking. My perspective has been that if the students must wear a mask, then I will wear one too. The decision before the school committee about flexible masking is about Gibbons Middle School and Westboro High School, not pre-K through six right now. I believe the primary data we should be looking at is Gibbons and the High School for this decision. We currently have 13 weeks of data. A total of 10 students, student COVID cases in 13 weeks at the High School, and two COVID student cases at Gibbons in 13 weeks. The numbers at our elementary schools have been considerably greater for COVID cases, while the only difference is student vaccination. Therefore, we recognize that the greatest safety mitigation layer is vaccinations. In the hierarchy of layered safety mitigation, vaccination is on top and surface cleaning is at the bottom. The middle includes ventilation, masks, hand washing, and social distancing where possible. And yet, studies of cloth or ill-fitting masks have not been shown effective as a layer of safety mitigation. Therefore, some experts pushed this one to the bottom. As I stated during the last meeting, November 17th, weighing the physical and mental health risks is the task at hand. We do seem to have a mental health crisis. We were given reports. I agree with some of the speakers today that it is serious, and we should be taking that seriously when we weigh this decision. I believe that flexible masking at Gibbons Middle School and Westboro High School should begin December 6th. That's 11 days after Thanksgiving Day, an incubation period that covers those potential post-Thanksgiving Day cases. I believe that vaccinated students and staff at the middle and high school should have the right to flexibly mask as the state has allowed and given us permission to do. I believe that mental health, morale, and potentially more effective learning can take place with an additional degree of normalcy returning to our older students. This is about our students. We represent our students. I am representing our students. Unvaccinated students and staff will remain masked based upon the DESC ruling, their own regulation. There's nothing we can do about that. I must be clear, I was and remain disappointed that at our last meeting, a date of January 10th was suddenly sprung upon the school committee. I believed in October that the process for collecting vaccination data was underway. It was not until November 14th, and that the process for the HR Director to analyze staff medical exemptions for mask-mandated classrooms would be in progress by November 2nd. Yet, November 17th, when voting could have occurred, January 10th flew into the mix of discussion rather than December 6th. I found that frustrating and deeply shocking. I am here to talk about December 6th. If you are listening at home and missed some of our past meetings and didn't read the document sent via email, then you may have missed that medically exempt students and staff will have mandated masked classrooms as part of this flexible masking protocol. Booster shots worn have been available for teachers at a much earlier date than now. Students and staff who choose to wear a mask and have greater fears surrounding flexible masking have been recommended by experts to double mask or wear an N95 mask in today's flexible masking world. That's what I mean by flexible masking safety. That's what I mean by flexible masking safety, that we're doing this in a more safe way, using processes that has been laid out in the update on flexible masking document that came out to all of us. I realize that masks are now suddenly required in town buildings. I spoke with the town manager, Kristy Williams, about this change to understand the reasoning today. This change reflects the nature of those buildings, including this one, and the way town staff interact with the general public. This is much different than our schools. Town staff work directly with the public in their offices, in the fields, and in homes and businesses. The schools are a much more closed environment with consistent contacts. The data for Gibbons and the High School illustrate this well. And therefore, I make a motion to add an amendment to the current masking policy for documented vaccinated students in Gibbons Middle School and Westboro High School to allow flexible masking effective December 6th, except for the week following winter break.
Thank you. So we have a motion.
I'll second that, and I can...
Thank you. So a second from Sarah. So because there's a second, we can have a discussion.
I can... Sarah? Okay. Sorry, I wrote some stuff down too, as usual. So I said the last three meetings that I see flexible masking as the next step in the evolution of the COVID process. Honestly, I go back and forth with this policy change in my head constantly, all day, all last week, all the week before, about what is the right decision and what is the right time? I've asked doctors. They said they don't know what they would do either, and they don't envy having to make this call. I think masking can add a layer of mitigation against germs. I'm a rule follower, not an anti-masker at all, but right now, I'm trying to work in reality. Students and staff in our community went out, were vaccinated in high percentages. The vaccines are working. Yes, there are breakthrough cases, rising case numbers and new variants, but vaccines help to lessen symptoms and severity of illness. I also know that even with vaccines, people do not want to get COVID for a variety of personal reasons. I'm not sure that that is 100% preventable at this point, and COVID is unfortunately still with us. I'm also not convinced that flexible masking at school would necessarily increase or decrease anyone's chance of getting COVID. Plenty of students and staff are already flexible in masking in their personal lives outside of school. By the numbers, as Lisa just went through, I counted 20 total cases, staff and students, at Gibbons and Westboro High School all year long. Masking can help if they're being worn properly and consistently. I'm not sure we always hit that level in the schools, and I think we already have a degree of flexible masking happening. Again, the policy change up for discussion is flexible masking for vaccinated individuals. Those that choose to wear a mask, of course, would have that right, and the decision to mask while at school would be made at the family level. At some point, we do have to trust the vaccines and boosters as a layer of protection, and in this risk-benefit scenario, I feel the benefits of students seeing faces again in school, learning world languages without masks, giving presentations, having in-class debates while seeing their peers, practicing social cues, smiling at each other in the hallway, all need to come back into the picture as well, for all the mental health and social reasons we all know about. I'm generally not one to go against our health officials, school administration, nursing professionals, and school staff that do the work, and I know they all have students in mind all the time as they make decisions. But for the purposes of discussion, also with the students in mind, I agree with Lisa that December 6th should be our date for flexible masking.
Other comments or discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I think you also said that if it was December the 6th, that we would remask for five days after January 1st. Is that what you said?
That's right. After winter break.
Okay. Amber, can you explain what the experience has been with Hopkinton High in terms of what has happened to them or not since they unmasked?
I don't have her current data. I mean, she and I spoke with each other, Superintendent and I, as she moved along. They did very well during their three-week trial, which was shortened by vacations, which, you know, they had like a couple, they had like half-days and stuff in terms, not half-days, but no school days mixed in there. So it kind of ended up being like a three-day week, a three-day week. It didn't matter. I'm just being authentic here about what she told me. And I think they only had one case, so...
I have actually, sorry, I looked at their website. They have a very interactive tool on their website. And they had, they've had six cases total, all school year at their high school. And I believe that they had two, and then if you look at the date, you can put in a date range, it was like November 1st to November 24th. I do believe they had four in that period.
Yeah, and so, as I said, I didn't get an update from her, and she was feeling that it went well, but that they were going to have, they were, they remasked, they did...
They did remask this week.
They did remask before Thanksgiving, because it only went through the, whatever it was, the 17th or whatever it was, or the 20th, the 19th.
They remasked this week.
Yeah, they did it through the 19th, and then they masked up to Thanksgiving, and then the masking this week.
They have a meeting, I looked up when their meeting was, tomorrow night.
So they have to decide if they're then going to move back. I anticipate they will. I'm not sure. They hadn't, I haven't talked to her. But I think her hope was that similarly, that the data would give them a picture and they would be able to move forward.
So their purpose in remasking was to allow time, if you will, quote, "in a secure way" to see what the results were going to be of that first?
Yeah, I mean, again, I don't want to speak too heavily about their process because it wasn't, I wasn't at the table for it, but they, they basically not negotiate, they negotiated it as a pilot so that they could try it out, and they didn't have their other protocols or their other things in place, and they've developed it as they've gone along successfully. I think they've done very well. I'm, you know, I think they do, she's done excellent work with, working with her team. But they only negotiated doing it for the three weeks, and then they hadn't finalized how it was going to move forward. And I believe, as I said, what their hope was, was that they could use it as a profile to get a picture of how they were doing, and if they saw a big increase, and then let that be a data point to guide them. So if you look at their numbers, I'm assuming like they have a similar, you know, high school size to us, that they would come back. You can anticipate they'll look at that and say, well, four cases, feels like manageable, you know, and they, they might decide to move forward. At this point, we can't speak for what they're going to do. I know that Carol had, they had a proposed agreement for the pilot to run through the 19th.
Yeah, that was the answer I was after, because I had heard of the news that they had remasked again, and I was trying to figure out what the purpose was.
Yeah, I don't think that the public part of the discussion, that that level of detail was there, but they had basically, we're going to pilot it and see what they learned. And so they piloted it, and now they're, they're going to come back together, and their school committee, as Sarah said, I think is meeting this week. So, you know, I think...
I don't think they looked at their most vulnerable, do they do that process that you, that we're doing, which is...
No, we ironed out our plan first. So I think, not that they didn't do some of that, but they didn't, they didn't offer that layer, and we wanted time to do that with people. And they handled their unvaccinated students differently than I think our plan is, you know, we learned a little bit and had a different capacity to lay out a little bit more of an articulated way to manage it, which is for the administrators to be in charge of tracking it in random checks, which I think ended up feeling like a better methodology and one that our team felt could work.
So I guess to follow up, I made a fairly long statement at the last meeting in regards to what the logic, the logic of this process is. And in fact, as I mentioned, I had supported an earlier date than the 10th of January. Between now and then, we have three more meetings of the school committee, to which at any of those times, we can react either positively or negatively to whatever we're going to do tonight. So if you compare now what's on the table for the school committee, the real difference in masking is 15 days. Whether or not, if we went to the 10th, it would be 15 days where we wear a mask in school for those two schools or not. The logic of what I had talked about at the last meeting was simply that we needed to remask after New Year's because people are going to be out and about doing their thing. So the logic, I think, for this early 15-day period is simply what is the experience in the high school and at middle school? And the experience that we have is, it's probably fine not to wear masks during that period with the caveats that I mentioned when we talked about it last, last time. And that is, for those who are at risk, particularly for the faculty who may be at risk, that for those classrooms, if the teacher says that, in fact, the population in that classroom needs to remask, then they would. And that would be part of what I would suggest is this policy. And so that's what we're talking about now, based on what's on the table here. This initial 15 days between now and, I would call it Christmas vacation, but others call it something different. But, and I think the risk then is when we come back to school after people are out and about. And so I can support this request to change to unmask on the 6th until, and in fact, they come back for a week after New Year's. Now, I would also point out that the history of this particular disease as we did know it, not as we're going to know it, has been that the incubation period is between five and 14 days. And so the period of time that we're talking about to remask is roughly eight days. And so the period of time that we're talking about to re-mask is roughly eight days in January, which is about half of that, or say, okay, if you want to split the difference, that's where we are. The logic for me would be that we would re-mask for two weeks after they come back rather than not, mainly because I'm a conservative person, and my judgment here is from the perspective of what damage can we do as a school committee by not following logic? We don't know any more than what seems to be logical based on a year and a half experience with this stuff. What we also know is that, in fact, there's a new variant on its way, and they already be here. And that would tend to want to say, well, maybe it's too soon to do this. But on the other hand, for the next 15 days, at this point, we don't even know that it's here in the United States. But I would say this, if the school committee votes unmask at the earlier date, that puts the risk now on the parents to get their kids vaccinated and do what's right for your kids. Certainly, I did, and I would support it for everybody. I think the history now of how safe these vaccines are, and it's the best protection we have, although it's not perfect, and we know that. So when we come to a vote on this, I would vote for the early date, because I think logic says we probably won't do any damage in the first 15 days, but we could if we don't re-mask later. So that's my thinking on this, and that's the way I would vote. Aye.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yeah, my, my only concern is if we go ahead and vote for December 6th date, today is December 1st, will that give the administration and faculty enough time to put a plan in place to safely unmask all the kids?
Are you asking me? I'm not ignoring you, I'm just, I made my recommendation.
That's, that's, that's my only concern.
I will, you vote the date, you vote your date, and we'll do what we have to do. It won't be comfortable. Tomorrow, we will go to work, and I'm texting Brian now to say, and they'll have to call me, I'm watching the vote lineup, and I will meet with Jack and Brian in the morning, and Bill, and implement your request.
The last thing we want to do is not give the implementation of this plan enough time so that we are putting kids at risk, whatever it may be, you know, however small it may be, like one of the citizens said, it's 0% chance. We want to keep it 0% chance. We don't want to increase from 0% chance.
Are the HR positions, like, was that work all done? Do we, in other words, I guess what you're really asking is, under the update on the flexible masking, when you go through and you get to the implementation section that is listed?
Mm-hmm.
I would have expected it would be ready, pretty close to ready.
It will be ready.
I think the real issue here is, what do we do when we start to worry? What kind of testing are we going to do? How are we going to track whatever happens? How are we going to know as a school committee to react to put the masks back on? That's the part of the program that needs to be...
So let me demonstrate confidence around this for a minute. I don't, I don't think in my disagreement about the date choice that I want to articulate that I don't think we don't have a good plan. We have a very sound tracking mechanism. We have excellent contact tracing. We have managed this crisis incredibly well at the school level, and our faculty has done exemplary work. They have helped to monitor test and stay, they have done contact tracing calls, they have changed their classroom instruction, they have done their jobs to make sure that everything you ask of them is going to get done. If you vote tonight a protocol that you want implemented on Monday, the Westboro Public School faculty will be ready, and we will work. We don't have a problem with our protocols or anything we've done to keep kids safe. The recommendation, as I said, to be clear, was a relationship-centered choice on my part as the superintendent of schools to give the faculty no worry and anxiety, because they have a much higher worry about this at Gibbons and the high school, the faculty, I want to be their voice here. And it's not often that, I will be clear about this, it was a personal choice to represent their voice and to say they did not want to unmask until January, and I chose the best middle ground I could pick, and they have not complained. They have accepted that we met in the middle, we acknowledged their anxieties, and they're ready to move forward. In this case, we have different purposes. That doesn't happen to us very often. You need to vote your conscience. I've told you I prefer to be unmasked. I agree with your decision-making. What's important that I want to acknowledge is this isn't a logical decision based upon data. I want to acknowledge that. It's based upon the fact that one of my jobs is to keep the faculty teaching at a high level, and I selected to acknowledge their emotional needs. That was what it was based on. We can do what you want on the 6th, and we will do it. You vote it, we'll do it, we're ready to go. That was an emotional choice on my part as superintendent of schools to acknowledge a faculty that's tired, stressed, worried, and has come back to work and done an incredibly good job for our kids. And right now, our kids at school, while they don't like being masked, I totally agree, and neither does the faculty, we're having a good year in a lot of ways, and I chose to protect that through the holiday season, because it's hard to do this job. So it was an emotional choice. I am very comfortable that Jack and Brian and the faculty will implement this successfully.
Well, first of all, this is not a criticism of the decision. And in fact, I'm, the reason why I put the question here is so that you all know that there are other issues besides parents and students out there. We have teachers who are also very concerned about this, and in fact, you've now heard the reason, the other side of the equation, which is why was the 10th chosen? The other thing I wanted to get on the street was the fact that we have a very, very good program in terms of making sure that we know what's going on in the schools in regards to COVID, because the people are working at it to be able to provide everybody, students, teachers, and us, the information that we need to know to make decisions. And having said all that, you know as much as we do in terms of why we do what we do sitting at this table. And then it's a personal choice, as Amber said, of the members of the school committee to decide what we think is in the best interest ultimately of all the players, the students and the faculty, and what we all have to live with. But again, I'll reinforce the fact that everybody that you know should get their kids vaccinated, because it's the safest thing between a parent and a kid. I think the, the world will prove it, and no matter what happens with this new variant, I think we're much better off with the kids being vaccinated than not. And therefore, you know, wherever this comes out, you've heard, you've heard my reasoning behind what I'll do.
I want to acknowledge that I met with the teachers, you know, that I've met with Bill, back in November 2nd, and that I was surprised that the expectation from teachers wouldn't have been November or December, based on those discussions. So I do want to put it out there that it's not that I'm only thinking of students, although we represent students, it's that I believe that the teachers being, having boosters, the teachers having a choice to mask, the medically compromised teachers having an option, a layer of safety, those all came into play for me believing that this is the right course of action, for, I mean, that's my personal belief.
Yeah, I mean, I, I believe we all agree that we, we need to go to flexible masking. So now the question is dates. If December 6th is the date that we want to, I, I leave this all the, all day, all day long, where the program manager prints out the program, you know, project plan and throws it on to the developer, and developers simply don't have time to implement what the project plan is. So that's what I don't want to get into. When we plan, we, the implementation will have several layers of complexity in it that we need to give proper time to address all of those, so that at the end of the day, it's implemented safely and correctly. That's where I come from.
I appreciate the question, and you can be assured that if you vote a date, that we will be ready.
I just want to acknowledge that all of the comments and feedback and requests that I've gotten from most, if not all, high school and middle school parents are advocating for flexible masking. And most, if not all, elementary school parents that have reached out to me are advocating to wait to implement the mask waiver. Some say January, some say never. Most want to wait until younger students have had both COVID vaccination shots. I need to listen to the students and the parents of the middle school and high school students. They've met the benchmarks. They are now actually getting boosters at this point. We set benchmarks for them and kept moving them, said wait for the teachers to get vaccinated, wait for your vaccination, wait for this and that. The state allowed us to apply for a waiver, we applied for a very long, well, to more, to me, seems like a very long time ago. And I would like to see this implemented, but I would like to make a modification to the motion that Lisa made. So I'll throw that out there, and then we can figure out process. So my idea is that we do a two-week pilot of flexible masking from December 6th to December 17th, and then we mask again the 20th until January 7th. So we're masking the few days before the December break, and we're masking the full week after. And we would have a two-week period of flexible masking where we could collect data, we could actually see who is, who is actually doing this. I mean, some people are making it sound like it's going to be a free-for-all, where kids are together breathing all over each other. A, they're already doing that outside of school. B, I suspect that most kids are going to continue to wear their mask or pick and choose which classes or when they want to take it down and put it back up, which is what high schoolers and middle schoolers are doing now in their daily lives. If you don't believe me, please follow the Facebook or Instagram or Twitter accounts of teenagers and see how close they are in their photos with their friends every day, after practice, after school, before school, in the car, riding to school. They're living a mask-free life except for in school, and I would like to provide them the option to not wear a mask if they feel that that's important to their learning, if they can do their best learning without it. I want to give them that opportunity to do that. So that's why I would say to do a two-week pilot, because I do want to stay in relationship with everyone, like the superintendent has mentioned. I am always, always, always an advocate for our teachers, because I was a former teacher, I work with teachers. My charge on the school committee, first and foremost, is to be student-focused. By advocating for teachers, I am student-focused, because without our teachers, without our awesome teachers, we wouldn't have the high-quality school system that we have. And I know that our teachers take very good care of our students. And I feel that I need to continue to be student-focused, and that this is just a choice for masking. That's all.
Can you repeat the dates that you...
So my, I would say that we would...
December 6th.
Yeah, December 6th to the 17th, so that's two weeks. And then when students and staff return on the 20th, everyone wears a mask until we close out that week for vacation, and then wear a mask when they return, 3rd to the 7th, and then begin again on January 10th with flexible masking.
What's the logic before these holidays?
So before the holidays allows people to mask and have a sense of safety and security prior to any traveling or seeing families that they would do during a December break. Those are my thoughts.
I could, I could leave it till this, till they go on break.
What?
I, I could go with them being unmasked till, flexible mask till go on break.
You don't feel it's necessary to unmask?
I know, I was trying to avoid the, I know, with the flexible masking, there will be the on-off already at school on some levels, so I was also trying to avoid the on-off, on-off. I could get behind doing it for the week after break, like Steve said, for the travel, but I think I'd prefer just going up to the 23rd also.
Okay, yeah, I just wanted to throw that out there, to see what you thought.
You know, make it easy for them.
I would say, I believe we should go to the end, but I also think that we're meeting on the 15th. That allows us to have seen what's going on between the 6th and the 15th.
Yeah. This is our pilot period, between the 6th and...
The 15th.
And the holiday.
The holiday.
So I don't see any purpose in the pilot.
Okay, true. I mean, we could talk about it on the 15th. If we see things are working well, there's nothing to discuss. If there, if it's, you know, at that point, we'll have some metric of, you know, we'll have some data.
In fact, we should discuss and keep track for quite some time with all of, that being one of the agenda items going forward for some time.
And we keep data all the time, and we're post-weekly numbers, we, every contact tracing, it all has to be submitted to the state, it's all posted to the website weekly, like...
Now, by keeping it on the agenda item, that gives us an opportunity to change the policy if and when needed, based on the data that we see.
I certainly would move wherever we have to go to maintain the safety of the students based on the data that shows up in this period.
Yeah.
You know, if we need to do something, we'll do it.
Yeah, I, once you vote the policy and the start date, the implementation will move forward. For the last two years, I've already been doing that with staff, acting within the policy to implement daily changes and masking and distancing and spacing desks or bringing them back together. That's all implementation that's happening anyway. I don't think it will require your ongoing monitoring. That's the work we have to do, and we're doing that every day. So if you want a summary of it, I can do it, I just don't want to give you the sense that you have to come back into some large burdensome process. We're tracking all of that all the time anyway.
We're already...
And we're already responding. I have, over at Fails, you know, four classes that are doing test and stay right now, so each day we're talking about modifying the structure of their day however we need to. So it'll just be a standard part of protocol that we'll move forward after you do this and figure it out.
All right. Is there any other discussion?
Okay, all in favor?
Hey, let's repeat what it is we're going to vote.
Yeah, and I, do you want to read it? Okay, I'll read it. And if you, if we, we need to monitor the, you know, do we need to amend the wording? Okay, go ahead, read the motion again.
I move to add an amendment to the current masking policy for documented vaccinated students at Gibbons Middle School and Westboro High School to allow flexible masking effective December 6th, except for the week following winter break.
Any other discussion about that?
No, I'm fine with that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. Okay. So that's five to zero in favor of starting the, or implementing the flexible masking mandate received for Gibbons Middle School and Westboro High School effective Monday, December 6th. The next meeting of the school committee will be Wednesday, December 15th. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, Steve.
I'll second.
Thank you, Sarah. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all for coming, it's nice to see you.